Morning, everyone. The December 7th, 2016 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink, you may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. And some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 69.9. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web on Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, go out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we do have available speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'm going to ask everyone, please, to rise for our invocation, especially with a special attention today being the 75th anniversary of Pearl Harbor, the day that will live in infamy, given so nicely, I know, by Reverend Mary Bredlau Grace and the Desert Episcopal Church, and remains standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Let us pray. Calm and creative God, as we stand here this morning with our elected city officials, help us to heal divisions in our public and private lives. Help us to live lives of cooperation, of compassion, of thinking of the others more than of ourselves. If we are on the freeway and see a vehicle trying to get into our lane, bless us with a pause to let that person in. If we are in a line at the bank, a store, a restaurant, a gas station, help us to live with each other and give a little, and avoid cutting someone off. In the business of the holiday hustle and bustle, help us to put down our cellphones and talk with each other face-to-face. Help us to have an open heart and mind, as we struggle as a nation to heal political divisions and rancor and hurt feelings, so that we may rise above all that has gone before us during this national election campaign. We offer a spirit of thanksgiving for all that has gone before us on this day, as we remember Pearl Harbor. Grant us the grace to live up to the name of our country, so that we live out our days ahead as a nation, not of divided states, but of the United States of America. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful crowd here on the holidays. Hope you all stay safe and have a wonderful, wonderful time through them all. It's so nice to see so many of our people here. We don't get to have that very often. They must all be here for you. Do you see all these people? Yeah, wonderful. Okay. Oh, my goodness, right away. December Citizen of the Month, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good morning, everyone. That was terrible. Come on. Good morning, everyone. Hey! Well, it's a great morning, because we're going to recognize some great people in the city of Las Vegas, and I get to recognize a couple. And my first one this morning is, if many of you don't know, everyone here on the City Council gets to recognize a citizen in the city of Las Vegas and give them a special award as the Citizen of the Month. We do that once a month. And today, it is my pleasure and my honor to recognize the 2016 Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas. And I have selected a police officer, K-9 officer, from the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, and he is Dwayne Layton. Dwayne, why don't you come on up here? The men and women of law enforcement in our community, every day, go out and protect and serve our residents. Whether it's the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, our own Department of Public Safety, or the other law enforcement agencies in our valley, we are thankful for their service. It's a tough but rewarding job. Of course, we can't recognize all deserving officers in our city, but I'm glad that I have the opportunity to recognize Dwayne. And I know he is very proud to represent the Southern Nevada law enforcement community and family. Dwayne moved to Las Vegas right after he was married, 25 years ago, when he accepted the entry into the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Police Academy. He started out as a police officer for his first five years, and then spent the next 20 years as a K-9 officer. Dwayne represents the department well, and because of his time in K-9, he has served as one of the many public faces of the department. I'm also retired from Metro, been retired for seven years, and I never did get the opportunity to work in K-9, but I will tell you, that is one of the plum jobs in Metro. You get a great partner, because your partner never talks back to you. Your partner does exactly what you tell him to do. And everybody loves a dog. And that dog not only catches bad guys and sniffs out drugs, but everybody loves a dog, and it's a great community policing tool. Officer Layton has volunteered his time year after year at Mark Carey Elementary School. And if you don't know who Mark Carey is, he was an officer that was killed in the line of duty many years ago, and we honored him by naming an elementary school after him that is in Ward 4. He meets with the classes there and introduces them to police work and his K-9 partners. Officer Layton develops healthy relationships with the police and public. He talks about developing good life skills, like being prepared, having a sense of humor, and as one student says, "Do your best and don't drop out of school." The children of this school think of Officer Layton as a celebrity and love his K-9 officer. And we are honored today to have the principal of Mark Carey Elementary School, Principal McGlothlin, here today. And would you please come down here and say a couple of words? Give her a nice round of applause. And you brought some students with you.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. Officer Layton, we can't say nothing but one thing, your family. We know that you do a lot of things to represent the community of Las Vegas, but just the community within our school, you are our god. You're someone that we can always depend on, and we would like to recognize you on behalf of our community. So I would like to introduce to you our student president and one of our officers that would like to present things to you.
Hi, I'm Mason Schrever, the president of Mark Carey Elementary School Student Council. And on behalf of the staff and students of Mark Carey Elementary, we would like to thank you for your service to the Las Vegas community and to Mark Carey Elementary School. Your example of service and integrity, school visits with Rico and Boris, hosting Mark Carey Day K-9 demonstrations, and student council installations and 5th grade promotions have benefited staff and students throughout these years. Congratulations on your retirement and best wishes to you and your family. We are forever grateful.
On the behalf of our staff and also our community, we would like to recognize your distinguished leadership to the Mark Carey School and community. You embody the essential qualities of how we want to foster to be good leaders, the legacies of tomorrow. As you can see, our people are excellence, and you had a lot to do a part of that. And we just want to say at Mark Carey and the community and the families, thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much. It's nice of you. In 2015, Officer Layton saved an elderly woman from a burning car and received the LBNPD Medal of Valor. At this point, I have a video that I would like to show you.
I got out of the car, and I could see going across all three lanes, this like S-trail of a firewall that was about six, seven feet tall. I mean, it was like something right out of Indiana Jones. It was crazy. And the fire trail went all the way up, straight up to the car, and I could see that the car was starting to get engulfed on the back as it was coming up on the hood. And I'm yelling into the car, I couldn't get any response from the person inside. You know, I don't know if this car's going to explode or not. The gas tank obviously had a leak in it from the fuel, but fumes are what causes the blow, and I didn't know if there was fumes in the gas tank, so I'm thinking, we've got to get this lady out of the car. So I grabbed this guy that was standing on the corner, I said, "I need your help, come over here," and I gave him the rest of my fire extinguisher, and I said, "I'm going to get the door open. As soon as I open it, I need you to spray underneath the car to keep the flames out." So I manipulate the door, I finally get the door open, and he starts shooting the fire extinguisher underneath there, and I'm yelling at the lady. Now I can see it's an elderly lady, and I'm like, "You need to get out of the car, get out of the car." And she's just sitting there. Well, now, the fire extinguisher's empty, and the flames are starting to come back up underneath the car. Now I got the open door, so I'm like, "We've got to get her out of here." So I climbed in over the top of her and undid the seatbelt, and grabbed her, and we yanked her out, and drug her over to the curb away from the car. And she was just in a daze. She was completely unaware that her car was on fire and that she was locked inside it. My fear was that this lady was going to either get burned alive, and that we wouldn't be able to make it. I was scared. I mean, we could have got hurt, but that's what we do. But she ended up being well. They took her to the hospital, and as far as I know, everything turned out okay with her. So I think it ended well.
That's a great video, but remember, he received the Medal of Valor for what he did that day, and he represents really all the first responders that are out there ready to save lives. And at this point, I would like to invite Captain Buffelli from Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department to represent the department and say a couple of words about Officer Layton.
Thank you, Councilor. Good morning, everybody. One of the things that the Councilman failed to mention is that Officer Layton and I, we actually attended the academy together 25 years ago in four months.
I got him through it.
Thank you. Yes. It's amazing, because my head blocked the screen, and he couldn't see. But one of the things also that was failed to be mentioned is that Officer Layton retires in 14 days. So, round of applause. The honor that I have is that I was able to be able to start our career 25 years ago with him, and now we're working together, and we get to end it together. So even though we'd never really worked side-by-side until this last year, it has been an honor to be associated with him, with all the things that K-9, as well as a 20-year officer in K-9, to do. It's phenomenal, and Dwayne has definitely raised that bar higher for the next incoming K-9 officer. So congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, guys.
Good job. Are you retiring too, Pete, or...? No, you're not? Okay, all right. Dwayne and his family live in Ward 4. Is your family here? Your wife, why don't you come on up here? Come on, come on, come on. Come on, you're the brains behind the operation. Come on. Dwayne's children attend Gerheim Elementary School, and you are a teacher, right? You're a teacher. Dwayne is very active in the community and his church, where he mentors young men in the scouting program. As Pete mentioned, Officer Layton is retiring in January from the LBNPD. We wish him the best in his well-deserved retirement, and retirement is good, I'm telling you right now. And we thank him for his service, and as a result of all that, I am proud, and the City Council is proud, to name Dwayne Layton the City of Las Vegas Citizen of the Month for December 2016. It will be on display right on the corner by City Hall, so you can come by and take as many pictures as you want for the month of December, and then we'll take it down for the next person. With that, you get to say the final words.
Probably for the first time in my life, I'm like speechless. It was an honor just to have my name thrown in for this. I didn't actually expect that I would get it, and it's humbling, but I'm grateful for the opportunity I've had to serve Las Vegas. This has been a great city for me and my family. I couldn't work for a better department. I work with some amazing people. And it's weird to be recognized for something that my partners go out and do every day. The whole thing with law enforcement is we go out to protect and make our community better, but we're really out there trying to make a difference in each individual's life that we come in contact with. And I've been fortunate in my career to be surrounded by amazing people. I've got a wonderful family that supports me. They let me go out on my own and do service. And you know, when you surround yourself with amazing people, it's very easy to look good. So, thank you very much.
Good job.
Well, no, Officer, and thank you very much. Did Metro give you your dog in retirement as a gift?
I had to buy him. But he's only a dollar, so...
What's your dog's name?
Bonnie.
Bonnie, isn't that great? Bonnie is what kind of a dog, and how old?
She's 13, and she's a Belgian Malinois.
Wow. I thought it was always shepherds, but isn't that interesting? And how many years have you worked with her?
I've had Bonnie like 10.
Oh, my gosh, you did get to take her home in January. Oh, I love that.
Let's get a picture taken by the sign, and we'll send you off to retirement. Come on over here. Put your wife on the table.
Okay, let's head over there.
Pete.
What's your wedding date? Your wedding date? And when did you enter the...
1991.
So wedding first?
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you for watching. Is this sign spelled the same way as the award? D-U-W-A-Y-N-E?
Yes, yep.
And up there, too? Okay, good. You are the envy. I'm not sure if it's because of the retirement, but certainly being in the K-9 corps, that's awesome. So congratulations, we're so proud of you, and we welcome you back. All right, for our next item, it's my pleasure to recognize a team of city employees who took on the monumental task that helped 137 individuals in our community. So I want to invite our Chief Judge from UniCourt, Chief Judge Cedric Kern up here. Yay, what a wonderful guy this is. Wonderful. Okay. Today, we are recognizing our Law Day team. This team is made up of employees from the municipal court, city attorney's office, information technologies, operations and maintenance, and parks and rec. It's a large team, so I want to ask everyone who's with us today, from this entire team, please stand up so we can give you... Oh, do I see you. No wonder we're packed today. There, come on, I saw some more of you in the back. Stand up. Thank you. Oh, my gosh, wonderful. Sherri Alexander, I don't see you standing up. I know you're here. Thank you all. What a great, great team. Did she stand up? I know she's somewhere. Okay. It's a large team, and we really are proud of you. Last summer, it came to the city's attention that some other agencies and nonprofit organizations were planning to host Las Vegas' first-ever Law Day to assist citizens qualified to take advantage of sealing their cases. This allows citizens who have committed offenses, but who've stayed out of trouble and qualify under the Nevada revised statutes, to have their cases sealed so they can continue on with their lives, turning them around, and become productive members of society. Of course, a criminal conviction can be very damaging to someone looking for a job, so the sealing of records becomes extremely important. It became very clear the plans for Law Day needed to be expanded, because only the court with jurisdiction can seal a criminal case. The program quickly grew to five jurisdictions hosting Law Day at Doolittle Community Center. Our team was able to seal the cases of 137 individuals during the event on August 27th. They did this on very short notice with our internal service providers, doing a fabulous job of setting up court facilities and technology at Doolittle. It was truly an example of the city going out of its way to provide service that will impact the community by helping these 137 people. Thank you for all your hard work, and I understand that each member of the team receives our certificates of appreciation at the luncheon in celebration of each of their efforts. But, Your Honor, I know this is so exciting for you, because I think you are behind everything I know that works in our courts. So if I may turn this over to you, and of course, I know you have Judge Almasi in mind, so you will speak about her. Do we have something? Are we giving something?
I have nothing.
We have nothing?
Our certificates.
I think we might. We might give one of our council people, but anyway, Your Honor, please.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Protem, Council, thank you for this recognition. Actually, Judge Almasi is the person that deserves the recognition. Unfortunately, she can't be here this morning. She has mental health court, which is one of our specialty courts, and there was a case this morning that she just could not get out of, and so I got notice in the morning to ask me to be here and thank all of you for the recognition. I have to tell you that they were able to take care of cases to the tune, by the time it's done, they handled enough cases in one day, sealing of records that we normally take care of in a year. And it was just this team that did this. When I was approached to ask if we would participate in this, the number was supposed to be a small amount. We were going to take care of 10 or 15. And so I asked the city attorney, and I'd asked Ed Plesky if they'd participate in it. And you know, municipal court is a court of rehabilitation we like to think of first, and it's also, because of our specialty courts, a court of a fresh start. And that's what the sealing of records enables some people to do, is to get a fresh start. And so we were able to get in touch with the folks with records, the city attorney's office, the clerk's office, and put together, which I would call an incredible team, to do a monumental task, to handle this in one day. And this could not be possible if it wasn't for Judge Almasi and Mr. Plesky from the city attorney's office, as well as everybody that's here on the team. So I would ask that, please, let's recognize them one more time with a round of applause. And we all want to thank you. Sometimes, in our jobs, when we do good things, it doesn't get recognized. We only hear about it when bad things happen, and so moments like this are special for the court, as well as all the employees involved.
Could you please just mention some of the specialty courts that have been created during your tenure, and what they do?
The mayor's asked to talk briefly about some of the specialty courts at Las Vegas Municipal Court. We have the habitual offender court. That's the court that Judge Almasi is the presiding judge of right now. The original 25 targeted defendants were arrested over 3,000 times in their lifetime. At this point, from 33 times a year, their arrest rate has gone down to three times a year. We are getting people's life back with that court. Judge Leung does the women-in-need court. It's a court that focuses on women who've had trauma, that work their way into the criminal system. It's an incredibly powerful court, and it's a court where we actually really do give people their life back. We give them some self-esteem, and we get them to move forward. Judge Almasi also heads the new mental health court. If you go around the city, you can see there's people sleeping on benches, and there's homeless people where really the problem is that of mental health. And this is a new court which he started, and we're getting great results. We're still working on some of the logistics and some of the funding, but as long as we've had it, I considered it extremely successful. Judge Roger does the DUI court, is where we focus, we want to prevent... Every time you turn on the TV, there's somebody who's died from a driving under the influence. And Judge Roger does a terrific job to try and get rid of repeat offenders and work on recidivism. Judge Hastings does the veterans' court, which is such an important court. You know, we send people in situations, and when they come back, they have mental health issues. And we didn't have anything to help those folks who come in, who suffer from PTSD and suffer from substance abuse. And he has been working really hard and making sure we get them out of the system. And I do the youth offender court. I work on the kids between 18 and 24 who suffer with addiction, and we work on their families, and we work on getting the kids some help, and we work on getting their families some help, so we don't return them back to the toxic background to where they came from. Municipal Court, Mayor, I think, is one of the best courts in the nation. We're innovative, and the great thing about the court is when we come up with ideas, we have a supportive city. We have a supportive city... We want to prevent... Every time you turn on the TV, there's somebody who's died from a driving under the influence. And Judge Roger does a terrific job to try and get rid of repeat offenders and work on recidivism. Judge Hastings does the Veterans Court, which is such an important court. You know, we send people in situations and when they come back, they have mental health issues. And we didn't have anything to help those folks who come in, who suffer from PTSD and suffer from substance abuse. And he has been working really hard and making sure we get them out of the system. And I do the youth offender court. I work on the kids between 18 and 24 who suffer with addiction. And we work on their families. And we work on getting the kids some help and we work on getting their families some help so we don't return them back to the toxic background to where they came from. Municipal Court, Mayor, I think, is one of the best courts in the nation. We're innovative. And the great thing about the court is when we come up with ideas, we have a supportive city. We have a supportive city attorney who... They're willing to work with us and that's why we're so successful. But part of it, really, is because the support I get from you guys. And thank you.
Simply incredible. I don't know a court system like this one and what you and your team have been doing all these years. Every time I turn around, there's a new idea. And, you know, I know a lot of the concepts come from us, the citizens, and it's really important, as we go forward in life, that you are aware of what's going on in the courts here in the city. It is unique. It really is. And it's because of the caring. I knew that His Honor was going to... Thinking of retiring and I couldn't believe that because he's so in love with what he does every single day and he changes lives along with the entire team and our city attorneys and everyone else. And so, it makes me so proud to know that you're going to do it again and stay on... Yeah, it would be too boring just to sit home, anyway. So, but, of course, you could go ahead... See? No, see what comes? This is future. So, we thank you for everything and ideas, send them in to Muni Court because that's where this comes. We've really made great strides with returning people to humanity and a life of integrity and self-worth. And it's because you care and your team cares and we care. So, thank you so much and we wish you a blessed holiday and the best in 2017. And please, thank Judge Almasi. She is one great woman. Great judge and just obviously, getting an award is less important than helping somebody today. So, thank her very much. Thank you. Thanks. Really and truly, you have no idea how special this group of people is. It really is something tremendous. You know, cities... People take jobs in cities and just do the job and click in at 8:00 or 7:00 and leave at 4:00 or 5:00, whatever it is. But, you know, I think the beauty of Las Vegas, this city, is that we really, really care and we do things. It's not just saying there's a problem. It's fixing the problem or it's building something. And I did see Sherri sitting back there because she's part of something that's coming. But everybody, our officers, everybody, our marshals, the entire city, our staff, our technology. It's such a cohesive group of people that are open to listening and communicating and hearing from every resident here. And I know all of the staff that work for our council people and mine, phone calls, emails, tweets, texts, Facebook, anything. There's so much to do and so much to respond to. But it's, we do care. And we will never have anybody in City Hall that doesn't care. So, don't apply. If you don't care, don't apply. So, you're back on stage again. What is this? We are back. Councilman Anthony has got... Oh, my gosh, you got fun again.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, again, good morning. It is my honor and to recognize 15 of our local kids that took their division in the recent City of Las Vegas Mayor's Soccer Cup. On the weekend of October 28 through the 30th, the City of Las Vegas and the Downtown Soccer Club hosted the Las Vegas Mayor's Cup International Youth Soccer Tournament. At this point, I'd like to ask Roger Tabor. Please come down here. Give Roger a nice round of applause. Roger is with the Las Vegas Downtown Soccer Club, who is one of our major partners in this endeavor. This is the 17th year of the Las Vegas Mayor's Soccer Tournament and it is the largest international tournament in the country. 457 teams participated in this event over a three-day period in October and we had teams from Mexico and Canada, as well as, obviously, across the United States. We're additionally excited at the Mayor's Cup for the older kids. Older kids, older players will take place in February 2017 and these are the older teenagers. And we are expecting 100, over 100 teams from outside of the United States to come to this soccer club. This is the best soccer tournament, really, as far as I'm concerned, in the world for our kids. And there are some great players that come out here from all over the world. Just to talk about some of the things that happened, we have, again, over this two... Over two weekends, over 800 soccer teams. We have about 18,000 participants. We have 57 soccer fields all over the valley, hundreds of volunteers, 3,000 referees, teams from all over the world during the February tournament, when it's the older kids. We have college coaches, about 400 that come out here all over the United States, looking to recruit these kids for their colleges. We have 25,000 rooms that are... And minivans. And if you go by Lake Mead and... Lake Mead and Tenaya during that weekend, you can't find anyplace to park or eat because it's packed with soccer kids that need to be fed. Our major partners for this tournament is the City of Las Vegas, Downtown Las Vegas Soccer Club that Roger represents and the Chapman Jeep Dodge dealership. The finals are usually played primarily at Betty Wilson Soccer Complex at Lake Mead and Tenaya, which is in Ward 4. But the tournament is getting so big that we had finals also at All-American Park and Centennial Hills Park in the City of Las Vegas. At this point, I'd like to ask Roger to say a couple of words as the president of the Downtown Soccer Club.
Thank you, Councilman Anthony. I have to say a couple of things, but most importantly, that this weekend was the most eventful one that we've ever had in 17 years. And if you combine all the events we had, the prior 16, they were probably equal to what happened this last one. And because of the institutional knowledge of... The people are putting this on, the great staff at the City of Parks Department, we were able to pull this off rather seamlessly. But early in the summer, US Soccer changed the rules and it came up with a mandate and said, "We're changing all the size of the fields. We're changing..." The rules were changing whether you can head the ball. We're changing everything for the younger kids. And it really affected our October event and affected many of the teams here. And in that, we needed to move championship... Configure different fields and move championship games around. But they also were involved in something with a no heading rule for little... for younger kids. And US Soccer sent us five different correspondents changing the rules where they'd say, "Kids can't head a ball, then they can't head a ball, then they can't and we're going to change it in two years." And we were having a lot of trouble communicating that because we had over 50 teams from Mexico who don't follow what US Soccer's doing. So, we had some challenges there. And just in the point we got that together and ready to go and put the schedules together for 450 teams, we had three teams from Haiti. And the night before, we're going to release the schedules, the hurricane hit the Haitian island and knocked out all TV service, all phone service, all internet. And we couldn't reach those people. So, we sat around for a week, you know, coming up with backup plans in case we lost the teams from Haiti. Unfortunately, the teams from Haiti could not come. We think that they had to cancel because of the storm was just so devastating, if you ever saw that. We think that most of them are coming back in February for a second chance, but the Haitians were... You know, it was just a great tragedy. Then the next night, our office burned down. And so, we're trying to do the schedules and our office burned down. And we also, as every youngster here knows, the commemorative pins that people like to collect were in our office. They got delivered the day before. So, we had $13,000 worth of pins in our office that burned down. And we weren't allowed in because of the... There was arson investigation a couple doors down where the fire started. Anyway, we got a chance to work with the extremely professional fire department in the City of Las Vegas and I have to tell you, I have to compliment their efforts. The arson department came down and tried to get involved with us. Then we got a chance to interact with the people from the building inspectors who were trying to get us in to get our awards out. And it's just extremely professional. We know how strong the Parks people are, but the firefighters and the building inspector people were just tremendous. Anyway, long story short, we couldn't get in there. We released our schedules. The only thing that we couldn't provide were the commemorative pins. And we have... Update all you kids here is, we've ordered new ones. The EPA will not let us in their office because there's asbestos in the office. And so, we still are unable to get in. So, we've ordered new ones. As soon as they arrive, we're going to ship them to everybody. But I wish the EPA was as efficient as the City of Las Vegas. Oh, once again, the field is absolutely spectacular. You know, they're the beneficiary of the reseating process and the resting process and, you know, teams come from... I can't even imagine bringing 10-year-old girls from Alaska, but they come, okay? And they come because our fields are spectacular, our weather is spectacular. And anyway, we... The fields never look better than they do in October.
One last thing to tell the audience about your fabulous man who's been with us since the beginning...
Oh, gosh. Yes, I do need to... I promised him, thank you, I was remiss. He's supposed to be here. I didn't see John Kennedy. Any soccer folks would know John. John is actually a member of the US Soccer Referees Hall of Fame. He's refereed NCAA championship games. He's just a tremendously accomplished referee and he has done our signings since day one. What we like to say with John, we... Some of the folks here don't always like all the calls, but what I can promise you is we've had 100% coverage by licensed referees, which equates to in February, some 3,500 referee shifts. They're there. He gets guys from all over the country. He's got great relationships and we always have licensed referees and John just does a tremendous job. Anybody else I recognize? Any?
Thanks, Roger. Good job. You know, it's... I don't want to say it's funny, but, you know, all the trials and tribulations you went through, if you went down to the soccer tournament that weekend, you wouldn't even known about any of that. It went off without a hitch. And I'll tell you, the mayor mentioned our employees. It's the people that work at the City of Las Vegas that make this tournament absolutely wonderful. The guys that cut the grass, that put the fields together. I want to thank Tim Hacker over there, the director of Parks and Rec. Give him a nice round of applause. And all due respect to you, Tim, and your director, but the most important person from the City of Las Vegas who makes sure this tournament works is Sherri Alexander. She is out there all weekend. Sherri, would you please stand? Stand up, come on. She's the brains. She's the brains of it. And Jerry Walker, where's Jerry? Jerry? Jerry, Jerry does all the fields. Thank you, Jerry. I mean, it's the best tournament in the world because of folks at the city that are behind the scenes that put this together. So, now, the most important thing is we get to recognize the 15 teams that won their division that weekend against some great soccer players. These are the best soccer players in the City of Las Vegas, right here. We have 15. They're not all here. There's only some here, but I'm going to mention every one of them. When I recognize a team, if I could have the team and coach come down here real quick. We're going to go through this quickly. We're going to get a picture taken with the mayor and city council. I have a certificate with... For each of the players with your name on it to take with you. And we're going to go through this and get everybody out of here and move on to the next one. So, you ready? Okay, the winner of the under nine girls... Okay, we need to move this, right, Jase? Yeah. I saw you over there. Yeah, I saw you over there. Okay, the winner of the under nine girls Chapman Division, the Rebels 08 DC, Coach Dan Ko. Come on down. Come on down. We'll take a picture and get the next team down here. Good job. They got their trophy with them. Good job, Coach. Thank you.
Okay, can we get in close?
All right, let's get some pictures taken. All right, good job. The Rebels 08 DC. All right, the under 10 girls Chapman Division winners, the Heat FC 07 MB Matt Bora. Are they here? Okay, give them a nice round of applause. The under 11 girls Chapman Division winners, Esperada FC Elite Barbara Atini. Come on down. Coach Barbara. Congratulations. Got your trophy with you? That's not Coach Barbara? Okay. All right.
Great, now, Coach, we give you the trophies for... I mean, the...
Yep, got the certificates right here. Thank you very much. All right.
Hit it, hit it. Way to go. Great. Wonderful. Take every one of these girls home. Wonderful.
Okay, under 11 girls Adidas Division winners, Heat FC 06 BM Megan Bracha. Are they here? Yay, there they are.
Got their medals on.
Got the trophy? Good job.
Great, yeah, oh, yeah. Go Vegas, it's way you go.
All right, good job. Heat FC 06 BM. The under 13 girls Chapman Division winners, the Heat FC 04 KR Key Reed is the coach. Come on down. They're not here. Congratulations. Under 13 girls Adidas Division winners, SSGSL Jenga Brazil, Coach Everton Sistari. Are they here? All right.
Hit hands, here we go. There you go. Terrific. Great. Brazil, something Brazilian. Great, great. Wonderful.
All right, good job.
Congratulations. What does Jenga mean? Do you know? Jenga?
Jenga? What's Jenga mean? Jenga Brazil? Okay, all right, means Jenga. All right, Jenga Brazil, congratulations. Under 13 girls Rotary Division winners, Barcelona NV 04, Coach Giovanni Rodriguez. Are they here? Yeah, there they are. Come on down.
Smile, ladies.
The most beautiful city in the world.
All right, all right, picture time. All right, good job. Barcelona NV 04, the winners. Okay, the under 14 girls Chapman Division winners, LVPSA 03 Girls Red, Coach Michael Madrid. All right, they're not here. Give them a round of applause. The under 13 girls Rotary Division winners, SSGSL LV Kings, Coach Cesar Martinez. All right, give them a nice round of applause. Under 15 girls Chapman Division winners, LVPSA 02 Girls Red, Coach Michael Madrid. Are they here? All right, give them a nice round of applause. Under 16 girls Adidas Division winners, LVPSA 01 Girls White, Coach Yancy Tisdale. All right.
This is... They'll be back in February, too. You're going to play in February, right? Well, they're old enough, they try.
There we go. Yeah, these are taller.
Are you practicing? Okay, good. It's good for the thighs. Strengthen your... Ready. Well, they're going to play in February. That's where the coaches and all the scouts come.
All right, LVPSA 01 Girls White, congratulations. We have the, uh, under-10 boys Rotary Division winners, Downtown LV SC 07 Academy Coach Il Dahan, are they here? Oh, there they come. Under-10 boys.
Is this our first boys team? What is that caused by?
This is a girl on a boys team, though, right?
How come so few boys?
Okay, look at them, way to go.
All right, good. All right.
Stop right there and turn around.
All right, turn around.
Hold that trophy up, hold that trophy up.
All right, good job. The under-13 boys Chapman Division winners, Heat FC 04 ET Coach Assad Marina, are they here? There they are.
What's this, under-13?
Under-13. Good job, guys. Good job. All right, there you go. All right. Heat FC 04 ET. All right, good job. The under-14 boys Chapman Division winners, LV SA 03 Boys Silver Coach Manlio Miranda.
Other side. Way to go. Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Way. Wonderful. Good aim, look at that.
All right, good job.
Turn around, smile.
Okay, you have to go down lower, you know, all of us back there, keep going.
Hang on, there's another back row, cameras back there.
Congratulations.
All right, good job. And our final team, the, uh, under-16 boys Chapman Division winners, players SC 01 Boys Elite Coach Ari Pez, are they here? All right, give them a nice round of applause.
We good, this girl standing here?
Yeah.
We good, we sure, okay.
And, uh, finally, uh, parents, thank you very much for taking care of your kids and keeping them motivated and getting them to practice and to play, so, nice round of applause for all the parents, kids, huh? Thank your parents.
And Jase Redkey.
And Jase Redkey. All right, congratulations, all the winners, and we'll see all the older kids in February. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're just going to take, anybody who wants to stand up and stretch while they are leaving to go back to school, I'm sure. Ah, I think this might be exam time, too. But we are so proud of you.
Well, we have a temporary place. You know, 1/30 in the morning. We should have told them to stay.
I know, but they'd already gotten up and gone. Okay, if I can ask you now, please, as you're exiting, be very quiet, so we may continue on with the rest of our ceremonials, and if you'll just follow the person in front of you. Please, if you would, keep your voices down as you're exiting, because we are not finished with our program this morning, and thank you all, congratulations, happy holidays, and have a wonderful new year, and do well at school, and stay in school. Because if you don't stay in school, you can't play soccer, so there. Okay, for our next item, oh, Councilwoman Tarkanian is going to recognize some special, special lucky lady.
In a way, I wish the youngsters weren't leaving now, because who we're recognizing now has so much to do with our country, so that we can have soccer teams playing, and so we can have the parks and the type of life we have now. So I'll begin by saying good morning to everybody who's here who obviously doesn't play soccer. Good morning. Our next ceremonial item highlights American strength, American commitment, and determination. Just as 75 years ago, on the same date, December 7th, Americans responded during and after the 1941 Japanese attack on Pearl Harbor and six other military bases in Oahu, Hawaii. And of course, that attack led to America's entry into World War II. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to point out, I'm probably maybe one of extremely few people in here who was alive at the time of that. I remember that day, I remember church, I remember how shocked we were to hear the information. We did not have TV the way we have now, so that the, you know, the 9/11, we were able to keep up with what was happening. All we knew, and I was in a military family, my dad was a lifetime Navy person, all we knew was that there was an attack at Pearl Harbor and many individuals had died. And, uh, I, I just wish that, that the youngsters who were here today, as well as the others in our schools, could remember that and picture if they were there. You read about the USS Nevada in the newspaper, and who do they say operated that ship? Teenagers, 17, 18, 19-years-old teenagers. Teenagers who had no idea what was happening, were, uh, get out there and fight and keep continuing to try and rescue those who were damaged. Robin Munay is a member of my staff, her dad was at Pearl Harbor. Her dad was there and heard the men on the USS Arizona, tempting to do code SOS, SOS, from the ship after it sunk. They couldn't rescue them, because there was no way at that time to be able to do that without having all the water come in and drown everybody. I, I mentioned this not to go from a very happy moment to a sad moment, but just so we don't forget those moments, just so we understand that you don't have the type of freedoms and fortune we have here in the United States without sacrifice. I remember, I was living in Vallejo, California, I remember that immediately they put these little, uh, dog tags on us, our name, just in case we were bombed. I remember going under the desk and all those drills that we had in case there were bombing raids, the submarines off the coast, were they there, were they not? We didn't find out until years later, they had been there. But it's, it's a, a part of a nation, a part of a group, a group we honor today, helps other groups who have been there fighting for the freedoms of our country. And maybe because, uh, of my age, I'm that, I'm that involved, but emotionally, I feel we cannot forget these things, we cannot be, uh, weak, we have to have courage, and that's what these gentlemen had at Pearl Harbor, they had courage. And I'll tell you what, the rest of us in the country, we didn't miss a test, we didn't have anything made easy for us, we, we had to be tough and we had to be strong to get through that, and I think that represents our country, and I just wanted to say that. And now I can get into saying that over 5.5 million military family caregivers in the United States provide daily life-sustaining support to loved ones who were injured while defending our freedom. These heroes are spouses, parents, siblings, and other loved ones who perform an array of functions at home, day and night. They care for sons and daughters, husbands, wives, relatives, and some not even connected with family. They care for those who were injured during their service in the military. These unpaid family members perform more than $470 billion worth of at-home care every year here in our country. They administer medications, they navigate complex, uh, healthcare systems, they provide emotional support, and act as advocates on behalf of those for whom they are caring. Often, they are the only available, knowledgeable, or trusted persons to provide such care, and so often, the caregivers are overlooked. To support the work being provided by these military caregivers, the city of Las Vegas is joining 55 other cities in becoming a hidden heroes city. This was established by the Elizabeth Doyle Foundation, and it recognizes millions of unsung heroes supporting so many of our injured veterans. Heroes who encourage, uh, those who are ill or those who have been, suffered, uh, physical losses, to be, maintain self-identity, and so that they can receive the resources that they critically need, and the Elizabeth Doyle Foundation has done a wonderful job. So let's view a very short, a PSA about the Hidden Heroes.
My father and both my grandfathers served in the military. I grew up knowing that our... My father and both my grandfathers served in the military. I grew up knowing that our nation's veterans are heroes, but I've recently learned about a different kind of hero, military caregivers like Heidi. Hidden Heroes are family members or friends caring for veterans who have become ill, injured, or wounded due to their military service. If you are caring for a service member or veteran, you are a military caregiver. You don't always ask for help, but you deserve our support. To access helpful resources and connect with other caregivers, visit hiddenheroes.org.
All right, I just wanted to have somebody, uh, not just I, say a few words about that, and, um, I'd like to say, ask Heidi Woodring, the Doyle Foundation Fellow and participant of the PSA with husband Chris, who is in the audience. They would come up here, please? I'm going to ask you to come up. And we thank you very much, and now, uh, I'm going to ask members of the Hidden Heroes Planning Team who are partnering with us. This is a Las Vegas City Partnership, and they're partnering with us, and that's Annie Ambrema Martin, from Veteran Ready. Is she here? Is she here? Notice all the different organizations who are helping out. This is from Veteran Ready. And Tim Martin. Okay. And Elizabeth Crane from Ranking Edge. All right, Ross Bryant, who's the Director of UNLV of Office of Veteran Affairs. Amy Frost, the Program's Facility Facilitator at Veterans Transition Resource Center. Sharon Goldstrom, Community Development Specialist, the state of Nevada. Dr. Rachel Sands, Veterans Transition Resource Center Psychologist. And even though they're not here, they do do a lot of work in helping out. Eva Sekiria, Veterans Transition Resource Center, the co-director. Heidi, of course, is here, and so is Chris already. And I wanted to have you say a few words, if you would please, uh, from the Elizabeth Doyle Foundation.
The fellows and the Elizabeth Doyle Foundation really are appreciative that our caregivers in this community are going to be recognized and have the resources they need to help them to help care for their caregiver, to their, uh, veteran, and to every organization that is willing to help to really show the city's caregivers, which we have so many. There's so many veterans who have caregivers in this city who are going to utilize this, and their life is going to be so much less stressful, and we really appreciate that, and the city of Las Vegas.
I believe our... Thank you. And Amy Frost, could, could you say a few words? Oh, I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't know you were there.
No worries. This is an exciting day, kicking this off. I was born in an Air Force base, and I grew up in it. Um, my uncle died in the, as a pilot, Navy pilot, and my husband Tom died in the Gulf War. My husband Ross now runs the Veterans Center at UNLV, and the Hidden Heroes are everywhere. Yesterday, I was in a meeting, and I was talking about what we're going to be doing with Hidden Heroes, and a woman who does a lot of work for veterans, who is a veteran, said, she kind of called me aside, and we went for a little walk, and she said, "I've been battling cancer the last year," and nobody in the committee that we were working on knew that. And she said, "My 25-year-old daughter needed this, and she's still going to need it, so we're going to be there for her." So not only those visible wounds, but those also invisible wounds, we need to work on those, too. And the team that's coming together is going to be throughout Las Vegas, and this is an amazing city, we've been doing amazing work for veterans, with veterans, for veterans, for a very long time, and we're going to take it to the next level. I'm honored to be part of this, I'm honored to be a team that's coming together, thank you.
And the city of Las Vegas has provided a proclamation for you, Amy, and for your group, and it's just recognizing the duty and sacrifice that veterans, their families, and caregivers have given in service to their country, and we, the city of Las Vegas, are seeking to identify military and veteran caregivers residing in our area, because we want to work with them to ensure that our government, employers, organizations, and nonprofit organizations are aware of the unique challenges faced by our military and veteran caregivers. We encourage these entities to create supportive environments and opportunities for assistance, and the city of Las Vegas will take steps each and every May during Military Appreciation Month to join other local organizations in honoring and recognizing the city's military and veteran caregivers in partnership with the National Hidden Heroes Campaign. So the mayor and the members of the city council give you this proclamation today, and we're very, very proud of what you do, and I know all the members of our council and our mayor have within their hearts such a great feeling for helping you.
We will do you proud.
You will do us proud, okay. Would you like a picture taken?
Sure. Where do you want us?
Uh, who, uh, who's taking the picture? Come on, guys, come on, guys. There you are. You got us? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very well. Thank you, thank you. Thanks, that's lovely. You know, anyone that's watching this, or watches it again and again and again, it's really important not only to volunteer, and you can always connect with all these organizations through the city, but, you know, most specifically, as veterans come back, um, they need jobs. So anybody that's listening that has a job, a full-time job, part-time job, reach out to a veteran, for heaven's sakes, they put their lives on the line for each one of us so we can remain free and healthy. So thank you all for what you do behind the scenes, taking care of our veterans. We all wouldn't be here without their continual sacrifices that they continue to make but have made in the past, and certainly today, of all days as we remember, um, wow, day that lives in infamy, and you have to remember, we don't want to go there again. So thank you all, you're the ones that make it possible for everybody to have a better life, and we appreciate what you do. Councilwoman, that was great, it's great. Thank you. And for...
I was just saying it.
Okay. And for our final item today, this morning, we have Councilman Barlow, looking dapper as always.
Stay warm, Mayor. How's everyone doing? Happy holidays to each and every one of you, and as the holiday season is upon us, I implore everyone to really take into consideration, uh, the opportunity to spend some quality time with your loved ones. Of course, Christmas is not about giving tangible gifts, but actually, being in someone's life is the gift of life, and being able to share some memories and share, uh, in the, um, successes, ups and downs of what you went through for the last 12 months, and really spending some quality time with those that you love, and, and that's what the true giving in the spirit and the gift of Christmas really means to me. And so, who knows, none other than giving gifts than my special guests here today, as I represent to each and every one of you, a Merry, Merry Christmas, from me and the Ward Five staff, to each and every one of my colleagues on the city council, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas, Mayor, Merry Christmas. Thank you, Merry Christmas to you. And Santa has a gift for each and every one of you, yes, we have a gift for you. It, it just may be some gift cards. Come on through, come on through, please, please. Come on through, please. Ladies and gentlemen, this gentleman here, whose official name is Charlie Bush, has worked for the city of Las Vegas on so many of our holiday events, I thought it would be only fitting that we give him a gift for the gift that he has given us for so many years. He has represented each one of our wards at some point during the year or over the years, representing the city of Las Vegas as our official Santa. So today, I would like to recognize Mr. Charlie Bush as a special as a special gift from the mayor and the Las Vegas City Council. Mr. Bush, we would like to thank you for always giving to us. Thank you so very much, and Merry Christmas to you.
Ho, ho, ho!
Share a few words, Santa.
I appreciate the recognition, and I love the work.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you all. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We're going to take five minutes, and we'll be back for, while everything transfers over, and we will be back for our meeting. Mr. Riegelman?
Your toy. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, folks, I was on a mission, which I failed. I will not tell you what the mission was. But anybody interested, call the mayor's office. Okay. We are on Agenda Item 10. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, say your name clearly for the record, and this is your opportunity to address the council.
Catherine.
Good morning. But the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. So good morning. You'll have another opportunity at the end, but good morning. We'll set the time in one minute. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman and distinguished city council. I am Catherine Duncan, Ward Five, Chamber of Commerce. I come to you this morning seeking your participation and your support for an event that we deserve to recognize every year. We deserve to recognize the birth and work of our great late Dr. Martin Luther King. His birthday will be January 16, 2017. I'm asking you to please look into your budgets. I know they're very tight. And ask each one of your offices to see if you can scrape up some petty cash so that we can recognize Dr. King in the way that he deserves to be recognized. I would like to reach out to each and every one of your offices to help us find a location, to help us find the funding, and to help us find the volunteers that we would need to have a folk festival where we bring people from all ethnicities together. The Senegalese, the Jewish, the Muslims, the Christians, the Cubans, to bring their cultural traditions together, let's sample each other's food, let's recognize the three people who most exemplify the work of Dr. King, and let's have a wonderful celebration. I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you today.
Your honor.
Thank you.
We're not to be commenting?
I know. I'm not going to comment. I just wanted to say thank you very much, Katie, for the invitation to go to the Universal Peace Federation meeting in Washington. Maybe next time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Mona Lisa Samuelson, and as you know, I am your community's most dedicated medical marijuana patient advocate and community activist. And I come this morning because on the Agenda Item Number 42 and 43 is about your federal and your state legislative agendas. And I have something very important to add to both of those. So I brought a memo today that I'd written up, and I hope that you have it in time so that we can discuss some of the issues.
If you'll give them to the clerk, I'm sure we can do that.
I have, right?
Thank you.
And I'll see you on Item 42 and 43, hopefully.
Thank you. And then we also have Michael Bissin or Bison, if you would like to come up. And you can come back at the point of your Agenda item as well.
Yes. There actually is no Agenda item. I just wanted to stop in real quick. And I thank you, Mayor, and anyone else from the council that stopped by for the opening of the Millennial Esports Arena. We had the big Halo tournament a few weekends ago. I actually came in today. I just got off the phone with him. I wanted to give a, I have a certificate of appreciation here that I was going to give to Richard Atkins from the Economic and Ermen Development Department. Richard went above and beyond, helping us in time get ready for the event, as well as finding a location for the venue. I came to city council basically unannounced on a cold call last March, and basically proposed what we were trying to do, and Richard and his team really made it happen. So I'll be meeting with Richard later to express my gratitude. But thank you as well to the city of Las Vegas for welcoming esports with open arms, and we're so ready to, you know, now that we're here and established, to get things going.
Thank you for coming forward. I was blown away by it when I was there. Just awesome. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else? Agenda Item 11. I moved too fast. So sorry, we're still on 10.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Diaz, and I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the agenda, but the lady spoke about 43 and 42, about the medical marijuana. I would have wanted to participate in that, but I don't have generations of money, so there's no way I could have came up with millions of dollars, or the million dollars to even start. My concern is that if we're going to use a lot of Colorado and organs, copy up for them and how they started their medical marijuana or the businesses, that Nevada would hopefully be open to the same and allow residents like myself to own a marijuana shop. It doesn't necessarily have to be a medical marijuana, but a marijuana shop that would help the community to build some of the wealth gap here in Las Vegas. There's There's, we all know that there's a severe wealth gap in the African-American community. And I'm just surprised that we're only going to have 80 medical marijuana dispensaries. And for those, that's probably the remaining of the certificate holders that are out there, and all of those dispensaries will be taken up between the people that's already been approved and the ones that are waiting because they can get two at a time.
Thank you.
So how do?
Thank you. We can have someone from staff just guide you, if you would, Mr. Sanchez, just what would be her process if you would see Mr. Sanchez.
All right.
Thank you very much for coming down. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item 11 for possible action. Any items, council? Staff and our applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
There are none, your honor.
Wow, that's two for two. Okay. Move on to Agenda Item 12. Possible action to approve final minutes of the November 2nd, 2016, ready, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve, please?
I would move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. And Agenda Items 13 through 41 on the consent agenda considered to be routine are recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Councilman Coffin, I understand you'd like to pull Agenda Item 32 forward for discussion. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward?
Yes, your honor, I'd like to pull Agenda Item 14 forward.
Okay. Councilman Beers, Anthony, anything?
I'm over.
Okay, 14, and councilwoman, anything? You're cool?
I'd just like to call back 28.
Okay. Councilman Barlow?
Good.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so.
I think I'd make a motion, your honor, to approve the consent agenda items 13 through 41 with the exception of 14, 28, and 32.
Okay, and that's your motion?
That's my motion.
So please vote.
Wait a minute, he forgot 28.
I did.
No, 14, 28, and 32.
Oh, you said he did. Thank you.
Okay. Motion, please vote. Motion carries. Thank you, Agenda Item 14. Let me read that. For possible action to approve a business impact statement regarding a proposed resolution to establish rates pertaining to sewer service for properties located outside the city's sewer service area related to a resolution that's proposed to be presented to council on the 21st of December, 2016.
I'd like to turn the time over to Ms. Gruehl with your permission, mayor.
Mayor, members of the council, I've had discussions with a couple of industry groups this morning, including the Chamber of Commerce and the Home Builders Association. They did not receive the notification on this business impact statement. We've committed to them that we will be working with them over the next two weeks prior to your consideration of this resolution to get them fully up to speed on what's in the resolution and the issues associated with that resolution. So I wanted to put that on the record for them. Nat Hodgins was here, but he had to run over to the BLM office this morning, and so I told him I would put that on the record to reflect our conversation.
So there's no need to obey even though these discussions are going to take place?
No, this is just the impact, the business impact statement. So I'm prepared to make a motion to approve.
Approve? Okay, there's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 14. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 28. For possible action to approve a temporary restaurant service bar license Karma Ultra Lounge, LLC DBA, Karma Ultra Lounge, 5900 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 8, Edgar Flores, managing member. This is in Ward 1 with Councilwoman.
Right. I just wanted to ask Karen, have we found out any more information on what you were checking on since I spoke with you yesterday?
Your honor, if I might, for the record, Karen Duddleston for business licensing. The information that we have does not show any relationships between this owner and any previous owners of this location. This location did have a restaurant with alcohol license before with a nightclub. This license that is before you is for a restaurant service bar. It would only allow the service of alcohol during a meal, so it would be only for dining patrons.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to check on the previous owner.
Right. There is no nightclub license here. They would not be allowed nightclub, although there may still be land use there. They'd have to come forward with that license for licensing.
Thank you.
But right now, they would not.
Thank you very much.
And therefore, you'll move to approve?
Move to approve, yes.
Do you want to turn your mic on? You're not on yet.
Move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 28. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Item 32 for possible action to authorize staff to negotiate and purchase a pedestrian access easement to be located at the northwest corner, 4th Street and Charleston Boulevard, APM 139-34-410-137, $5,000 to the general fund. This is in Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, your honor. This, thank you for allowing me to pull this item forward for a brief explanation. It looks like a small amount. It's only $5,000. But the impact on hundreds and hundreds of people, particularly in the downtown, particularly those who walk or ride their chairs on Charleston, their wheelchairs, are going to be very appreciative of what's been done because of the actions my staff, your staff, and everybody else in collaboration realizing this is a long existing problem caused by a widening of Charleston by the Nevada Department of Transportation. And yet, it was just extremely expensive and always looked upon as being too big of a task to handle. And yet, our staff has found a creative way to enable this to be fixed. And now, I'm going to, we have a few pictures. I want Jerry Walker and David Bowers to be the soundtrack for a couple of photos to show you what is happening and how little things can mean a lot.
Thank you, mayor. Members of council, my name is David Bowers, Director of Public Works. And while Public Works is responsible for acquiring the right-of-way for the easement, it really was in operations and maintenance perseverance that is achieving this. So I'll let Jerry Walker speak on this.
Thank you, David. Jerry Walker, Director of Operations and Maintenance. Councilman Coffin, you brought these concerns to our attention several months ago. Once you raised them, we immediately took a look the next day. Then about two or three weeks, we'd addressed 40 minor issues, and then we had two significant obstacles to address. This is the Nevada Department of Transportation roadway, although we're responsible for the sidewalk, and so it makes it a little more complicated to address at this location. Bear with me, this is my first time to put a slide up here. I'll see if I can figure it out.
There you go. Well done, A+.
And so, this location is at the northwest corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Charleston. And as you can see, we have a traffic signal pole at center of the sidewalk. You need 30 inches minimum clearance for a wheelchair. There's probably 20 inches there. And so this location is impassable for anybody with that kind of restriction, a walker, a wheelchair, the sidewalk's not usable for you. And so at this location, we do actually have right-of-way. We've coordinated with the property owner. We pulled the NDOT permit and the NDOT barricade plans. This will be done concurrently with the second location. What we will do is we will move that little bit of curb. We will move the fence. We will move the oleanders, and we will construct a concrete bypass. It won't be perfect, but you will be able to get around now easily in a wheelchair or with a walker.
Mr. Walker, are the, has a part of our staff gone out and looked throughout the city for other incidences like this where pedestrian, wheelchair, pedestrian, or walker can't get by?
Yes, we have, fortunately, we're a newer city, and so we're not inundated with these, but these are throughout the city. Normally, roadway projects, whenever Public Works does a reconstruction project or Operations and Maintenance does a overlay project, we're obligated by federal ADA requirements at that point in time to upgrade the sidewalk. And priorities are to make sure ramps, restrictions, things like that, it's fully usable by somebody with mobility restrictions.
But you do have staff going out and looking because obviously if you have these two or five, we have plenty of others.
We have staff who will look on the roadway projects. And so whenever we have a roadway project, we look. We implemented a neighborhood residential sidewalk ramp program a couple of years ago. And we will also be implementing, hopefully sometime in the next calendar year, a more proactive application to residential neighborhoods.
Very important.
Madam mayor?
Yes, please.
I believe in the medical district, you have similar problems, and my understanding is that they're going to be correcting that also. Have you heard of that?
Those would likely be part of David's capital improvement projects.
Right.
Again, whenever a roadway project is constructed, that alignment is inspected and obstruction's removed. And so that's basically the primary process for addressing these. The next issue we do is if you have a concern, you can't make it from point A to point B, you live in A, you need to get to the bus stop at B, if you call us, I make a path for you. And so we do respond as concerns come to our attention. And we are very proactive. We believe everybody should be, have that mobility. The right-of-way is for the second location. That is on the corner of 4th Street and Las Vegas Boulevard, I'm sorry, 4th Street and Charleston. Again, traffic signal, center of the sidewalk, there's no way around it for anybody with a restriction. And so we will be buying the right-of-way on the gas station side of that pole. We will again construct sidewalk, concrete bypass, so that anybody using a walker, a wheelchair, or other restrictions can get by at that location.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Your honor, there are some, even some businesses that can't afford to or are public-spirited enough to actually give us the land, too. And as this moves along, hopefully, you know, we'll be able to hit East and West Charleston. It is a glaring example of what happened over the decades when everybody thought only of the automobile and moving everything fast and furious around a town. And, you know, it's just, it was overdone. And that's why we have a walkable communities program, because our community is not very walkable, but getting better. So this kind of thing is staring you right in the face, and people are seeing it all the time, but our staff can't find every one of these. They're chasing their tail, fixing projects and problems. So it's out of the budget, frankly. And so that's why we walk, and that's why we explore our wards. And we find these things. And trust me, it's all the way up and down Charleston, and it's just one street. Made them too wide, too fast, and then it was NDOT's project that did that, finally. But in the end, it intruded right upon all the people. This is way before ADA, way before that. It was still, you can't walk through there without turning sideways. So I really appreciate the fact that you worked, and that's why I say little things like this mean a heck of a lot.
We should have this by the end of January. We've still got to wait for the easement to be purchased, and so hopefully, we'll need a full weekend to do it. Hopefully, it'll be late January.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Bye.
Thank you, councilman. And so you move Agenda Item 32.
Your honor, I'm sorry, I move for approval of Item 32.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 32. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. For our next item, we're going to pull forward Agenda Item 46 because the other items, 42 through 45, are administrative discussion. And we have people here on this particular agenda item, which I will read. Discussion for possible action regarding exclusive negotiation agreement, ENA, between City Park Way 5, Inc., CPV, and Symphony Park Development Company, LLC, DevCo, to determine the feasibility of development projects on Parcel B located 440 South Grand Central Parkway and Parcell J, K, and L located on a portion of 505 West Clark Avenue and Symphony Park. This is in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow, to which I will be abstaining because there is a member of the development group by the name of Mark Fine, who aside from the fact that I love him deeply, he is a partner with my husband and myself on a project, on a piece of property. So we will go forward and, Mr. Strick, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, mayor. Members of city council, for the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. Before I begin, I'd like to make one change and read that change into the record, and I have copies for the mayor and the council as well as our clerk and communications team. The change is Exhibit C, which is the disclosure of ownership principles. It lists the principles for the development company, which is Symphony Park DevCo LLC. The principles are remaining the same, Principles 1 through 8. There are two additional principles which are being added to the team, which are Mark L. Fine with a business address of 650 South Main Street, as well as Jeffrey Fine at the same address. That is the only change to the agreement. And with this comment, I'm reading that change into the record and also presenting a new disclosure of ownership and principles, which will replace the existing Exhibit C to the agreement. With that, I'd like to invite our development team up to the dais and just say a few introductory remarks. We're really excited. This really, I think, represents a new chapter of our development in Symphony Park. We have a lot of interest in development for Symphony Park coming from really two main streams of interest. One is with the adoption of our Las Vegas Medical District Plan and the University of Nevada Las Vegas School of Medicine being imminent, both in starting classes but also needing space, and all the providers that are attracted by that activity. There's a lot of interest in healthcare in the medical district, but also in Symphony Park. We're going to be actively working on bringing users to the medical district, but we think it's natural that a lot of that is going to spill out of the medical district. And this is, this is kind of the first step, seeing that. We're also seeing a lot of interest in residential as well as hotel interest. This agreement is an exclusivity agreement. So mainly, it's designed to give our development team a chance to study the development of a new medical mixed-use campus on four parcels in Symphony Park. Parcel B, which is to the west of the Smith Center campus. Parcel J.K., which is south of or behind the Smith Center campus. And then Parcel L, which is immediately east of the Smith Center campus between the Smith Center and the rail line. Our development team here has 10 individuals, and so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer Lazovich to introduce the development team.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good morning. Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here today proudly representing the development team. Also with me, but sitting behind us, is Terry Murphy and Steve Rice. I can just tell you personally, again, we're all very excited to be representing this very experienced and committed development team. Standing behind me, and I'm going to let them say a few words, but are a few members of the group that Bill talked about. Right here is David Michael, also Bill Fauks, and then, he needs no introduction, but it is Mark Fine. So I want to just say that we did pass out to all of your council offices and have provided previously to your staff a booklet that explains the, who the development team is, what their experience is, and perhaps most importantly, the number of projects that they have delivered here in southern Nevada. They are a development team that delivers on what they say. They've put a lot of their blood, sweat, tears, and money into getting us to this point where we are today before you. We find it very, very exciting. I also want to just personally thank Bill and his entire staff for working with us. We've had a number of meetings with them. They are very, very protective of the kind of people that they want to bring to Symphony Park for development to carry out the city's vision. We appreciate their vote of confidence. And with that, I will turn it over to David to share some other thoughts.
Thank you, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for taking some time for us today. First, I wanted to tip my hat to the City of Las Vegas for honoring veterans and especially Councilwoman Tarkanian. My father was one of those 17-year-olds in the Pacific Theater, and time tends to cover memories. And unless we go back and remember what people have sacrificed for us, we won't really appreciate our liberty. So thank you for that. Jennifer's correct, we're at the starting line with this exclusive negotiation agreement. But as you all know, when we get to a starting line, there's usually a lot of preparation and planning and training that goes on before that. When Bill Fauks, my partner, brought this opportunity to me about 10 months ago, we acknowledged that Symphony Park was a big dream. We've watched it and coveted it for quite some time. And we knew that if we were going to take a shot at this, we- And we knew that if we were going to take a shot at this, we were going to have to assemble a dream team, and I think that's what we've done. As Jennifer noted, we've got a fine team of developers. In this package, I think you probably get six developers in one. So we have got a lot of attention, and we're really focused on helping the city and partnering with the city in achieving their vision for Symphony Park. All right? We hope that you approve this exclusive negotiation agreement today. We've had a lot of fun with Bill Arnt, Adreno Ramos King, Sean E., and Tammy. They've really, like Jennifer said, they've really protected your project here, and rightfully so. But we look forward to Monday, Tuesday of next week hitting the ground running and having a lot of fun with the city council and the city staff to bring this to fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'm happy to add my two cents. I have been involved in development in this community for many, many years, the Symphony Park, and have watched the Symphony Park project evolve. I've tried to maintain a level of independence, because I really wanted to make sure what happened here was going to be something that we would all be proud of, because, you know, the stronger our city core is and the progress we've made in building our city core, although especially the last 10 years has been spectacular. And I wanted to, you know, I think I've been involved on a voluntary basis, trying to help out in many ways, in terms of being a value-added to the city, in terms of thinking, and have refrained from actually identifying with any development group until I was very comfortable that we could actually do something that was an additional value-added and bring some, something to the community that will continue to help the downtown grow in a positive way. So I've been involved with partners, as partners with the other members. I think we have a team that's got an amazing amount of experience. I think you've reached out in different places around the country with regard to other developers. But I think having the local visibility and the local experience, I think, will help us reach a goal that perhaps might have been more challenging otherwise. So I'm glad to be a part of it, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Pardon? Would you state your name for the record?
My name is Mark Fine, and I'm at 650 South Main Street.
Good catch, Councilman Beers. Always on it. Any comments, questions, before I turn this over to Councilman Barlow? Lean?
Good deal. I want to, number one, thank Bill, you and your entire team for all that you do in order to grow and continue to grow Symphony Park. And I know the history, of course, of the Fine Group. They do such a fine job around the valley and have been doing so for many, many, many years, and having, as you mentioned, the dream team of developers, six for one, that's not bad. And so that's exactly what we need to really grow the vision that we've set out to achieve in Symphony Park, is to have a dream team to pull off such great developments that, as Mark mentioned, you know, are game changers. And so for that, I stand behind, fully support this item moving forward, as far as the exclusive negotiating agreement, and looking forward to our dream team at the city, holding your feet to the fire and negotiating on behalf of the city of Las Vegas, so it most definitely will be a win-win for the entire community. So thank you for that, and so I'll move for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you very much. This is motion to approve on agenda item 46. Please vote and please post. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Arnt, and team.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to agenda item 42. Report and discussion for possible action on the federal legislative agenda for the, wow, 1,015th Congress. This is in reference to all wards, and I see with us, we have Ms. Cram here, wow, big time from Washington. Mr. McAnallyn. So, Mr. McAnallyn, good morning, and do restate your name, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Brian McAnallyn, Government Affairs with the city of Las Vegas. Today, we have in front of you your federal agenda that we will take to the 115th Congress and advocate on behalf of the city. I first would like to just thank the Administrative Services Department and the Communications Department for all their help in putting this together. You have the three-ring binder that has our federal agenda in it, and I'll leave one up here in case anyone from the audience wants to look at it. We will have this on the website and available for the community to review and look at. It's kind of an intense, heavy component document, so it's a little hard just to email it out, but we will have it on our website, pending adoption by the council today. We also wanted to give you an overview, not only of the agenda, but of the 2016 election outcomes, both for our state and nationally, as we look to the new administration. So to my right, I would like to ask Vicki Cram, our contract lobbyist, who has represented the city for a number of years and done a fantastic job, and is extremely helpful in representing us on a day-to-day basis in DC. So I'd like Vicki to provide that election impact.
Thank you very much, Brian. For the record, my name is Vicki Cram. I'm a principal with Squire Patton Boggs in Washington, DC, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the election overview. The, as we know, President-elect Trump will be sworn into office on January 20. He has already announced some key cabinet appointments. Attorney General at the Department of Justice, Senator Jeff Sessions, Secretary of Transportation, Elaine Chao, Secretary of Commerce, Wilbur Ross, Department of Housing, Secretary of Department of Housing and Homeland Security, Dr. Ben Carson. We're hearing rumors that they're going to announce General John Kelly for the Department of Homeland Security, potentially today. We have also heard that they will be making further announcements on the Department of Interior and EPA, maybe this week. So we're looking forward to seeing more of them, more of these nominations being rolled out. Of course, all of them need to be confirmed by the Congress. In the United States Senate, we still have Senator, Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell, and now a new minority leader, with the retirement of Senator Reed, Senator Charles Schumer from New York. There will be a 52-person Republican minority, majority, and 46 Democrats, which is a plus-up of two Democrats in the Senate, and two independents who caucus with the Democrats, and that's Bernie Sanders of Vermont and Senator Angus King from Maine. Of course, you still need 60 votes to bring anything to the Senate floor, so that will have to be a bipartisan effort to bring bills to the Senate floor, except for a couple of occasions, and one of them is a thing called budget reconciliation, which is sort of a budgeting mechanism that can be used, which only needs a majority of votes, and that is anticipated to be used early in the year to repeal portions of the Affordable Care Act. In the House, Speaker of the House will remain, Paul Ryan, and Democratic leader will be the minority leader, and it's Nancy Pelosi. There was a small challenge to her leadership, but that was, she sailed through. The, there's a 239 Republican majority, 194 Democratic minority, that's a plus-up of about six seats, and there are two seats to be determined. They're both in Louisiana, which holds its election, its final election on December 10. There have been, as we all know, some changes to our Nevada delegation. We've lost some seniority with the retirement of Senator Harry Reid, formerly Majority Leader and Minority Leader in the Senate, and with the loss of Congressman Heck. Committee assignments for our freshman Senator and new Republicans have not yet been made. Our congressional delegation has some keys, even though we have, we have some junior freshman people, we still have some very, very key seats that will be involved in some of the ongoing rollout of the first 100 days of the Trump administration. For example, Senator Heller serves on the Senate Finance Committee, that will be very involved in tax reform. And Congressman Deena Titus serves on the Infrastructure, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, and that, of course, will be very involved in any rollout of a transportation infrastructure package, which is high on President-elect's to-do list. I want to talk a little bit now about the lame-duck session of Congress, which we are currently in, just because we're trying to wrap up, or at least extend, the FY 2017 appropriations process. The FY 2017 process, only one bill was passed out of the 12 appropriations bills before the fiscal year that started October 1. So the federal government is currently operating on a short-term continuing resolution at FY 16 levels that expires on Friday. And last night, they released another short-term continuing resolution, which will go until April, the end of April. The idea being that the new Congress and the new president will determine the funding priorities for FY 17, rather than wrapping them up in this Congress. It is a pretty clean continuing resolution, but it does add some funding for some military operations, some flood relief, and some funds for New York City for President-elect Trump's security, and some money for Flint, Michigan. It also expedites the waiver needed to confirm President-elect Trump's nominee for Secretary of Defense. There may be some passage, problems with its passage over the next couple of days. A lot of things are moving around, as they tend to do at the very end of a lame-duck session, but we anticipate that they will probably adjourn, sign, e, die in the next couple of days. I also wanted to mention in the, in the lame-duck session, that today the Senate will be voting on something called the 21st Century Cures Act, and it passed the House last week. This has $4.77 billion worth of funding for the National Institutes of Health over the next 10 years, and it includes Vice President Biden's cancer moonshot. It also has $1 billion to address the opioid epidemic and some mental health reform provisions, particularly around reentry of prisoners, which I think will be of interest to us. And then also in the mix is an article-
Excuse me, could I interrupt you there?
Yes, certainly, Mayor.
Having been back in Washington, asked the Attorney General on our last trip, taking Schedule 1 marijuana, any movement there? Where would that fit, under the health and welfare? Where is the issue of marijuana going to fit in this agenda here?
Well, it won't be taken up, I don't think, in the remainder of this, this Congress.
Okay.
But it will probably be left, this administration has been very, has stood back from marijuana and not been very active on it. In the new administration, it's unclear and a little too early to tell how they will treat this. As you know, a number of states came online with additional recreational and, and medical in this past election. I think that there are quotes that say that President-elect Trump has said he's supportive of medical marijuana. The incoming Attorney General, who has, of course, still to be approved by the Senate, has, has been very negative about both recreational and medical. But it's, it's unclear at this point how this will roll out and how they will, how they will address it.
Or whether they will just take it off of Schedule 1-
Or whether they will take it off.
-and move it that way and leave it there.
Right. I think it's a little too early to know right now.
I, I know we have someone in our public that wanted to address specifically that, but I thought that might at least, at this point, from your understanding of what's happening in Washington, where that is.
Correct.
So knowing that Nevada did approve, and we've got California, Oregon, Washington, Colorado, and myriad other states that have already approved, what does it do? But if there's no feeling yet beyond the appointment of session, if he passes, and then President-elect Trump's own vocal, vocalization of his, what he's inferring, there's nothing more than that.
Right.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Please don't interrupt.
To move on to the next Congress, President-elect Trump's top priorities for the 115th Congress will be border security, repeal of the Affordable Care Act, and the economy. His agenda will provide both challenges and opportunities for the city of Las Vegas. I'm going to talk a little bit very quickly about the budget and appropriations process moving forward. As I already mentioned, this continuing resolution, which will fund federal programs at FY 16 levels, will expire at the end of April. Concurrently, the administration and Congress will begin the FY 18 budget process. As the FY 17 continuing resolution expires in April, the nation's borrowing authority, which is known as the debt ceiling, will, will expire around about March. The Treasury Department can use different gimmicks to keep it going for a month or two, but it will have to be addressed. So there is a potential for budget cuts or offsets to raise the debt ceiling, which may occur in the current fiscal year. And then again, with the FY 18 process, beginning at the beginning of the year, FY 18 sequestration, which are across-the-board cuts, come back into effect unless there is a larger overall budget deal, as there has been over the last couple of years, to allay those sequestration cuts. So there's a lot of moving parts, again, on the fiscal side of it and the domestic discretionary spending side of it, that remain to be seen, how they will be handled by the incoming Congress. Those, of course, are the areas where we get most of our federal funding, like the Community Development Block grant, the Home Program, Tiger Grants, et cetera. Among the key programs, there's also talk about, let me just stop back, go back for a second, there's also talk about bringing earmarks back. I don't think that's going to happen, but there has been some serious talk about that. And there have been some efforts at reforming the budget process, which clearly has a lot of challenges. Among one of the key programs for which we advocate in the appropriations process every year is the Urban Area Security Initiative. In FY 2016, the city received $3 million to build capacity to prevent, respond to, and recover from natural disasters and acts of terrorism. Every year, we seek to include language in the Department of Homeland Security Appropriations Bill to allow cities like Las Vegas to be funded, which are not the top 10 cities, to be funded under the program. We also work with the Department of Homeland Security every year, reviewing our annual data, which changes every year and affects our ranking relative to other cities, and hence, whether we get funded or not. We will continue to strongly advocate for our inclusion, for the funding level and for our inclusion in this program in FY 17 and FY 18. Border security and sanctuary cities are another priority of the Trump administration, and Trump has stated that he will remove all federal funding from so-called sanctuary cities. In the past year, Congress has, Congress has attempted to pass legislation, and many bills were introduced, that would restrict funding from so-called sanctuary cities or political jurisdictions considered to be in violation of 8 U.S.C. Section 1373. Section 1373 restricts local law enforcement from implementing policies that prohibit the sharing of an individual's immigration information with the federal government. We believe that the city is compliant with Section 1373. At this point, it's a little too early to tell how this will unfold, just like the marijuana, cannabis issue. Various bills introduced on a subject in the 114th Congress, the Congress that we're just wrapping up right now. Excuse me.
Could I just ask a question?
Yes, please.
Going back to the sanctuary cities, we evidently are on some list as a sanctuary city or similar because of statements and things that have come out in the papers and places through Metro. I've never thought we were a sanctuary city, because I thought we would have to vote on it, and we never voted on it. But what happens in a case like that? Are we on some list that might cause us harm? That's what I'm wondering.
I'm getting to that.
Oh, okay.
So there have been bills that are introduced in this Congress that define sanctuary cities, they haven't been passed, in a variety of different ways.
So they will define it, then, because that seems to be a problem right now.
It needs to be defined.
Yes.
We are currently in compliance with Section 1373. Various bills have been introduced that include very broad definitions of what a sanctuary city is, and how each of these bills have applied discrete penalties, such as loss of CDPG funds or loss of Department of Justice funds. And many of the definitions in these bills could penalize jurisdictions which implement standard policing practices and procedures to protect public safety. In May, the Obama administration's Attorney General's Office of the- In May, the Obama administration's Attorney General's Office of the Inspector General issued a report that was posted on their website in July, so we didn't get to see it until July, in response to congressional inquiries that reviewed many jurisdictions' actions across the country relevant to this Section 1373 that we are, the city is in compliance with. And they called out 10 jurisdictions for further review to look at. And one of those jurisdictions was Clark County. And according to this report, they said that Clark County had received $6.25 million in various Department of Justice funds, including SCAP funds, which is State Criminal Alien Assistance Program funds, Office of Justice programs, and Office of Violence Against Women programs. And then they listed nine other jurisdictions, including the entire state of California and the entire state of Connecticut. So the reason that Clark County was on the list, according to this OIG report, the Office of the Inspector General, the Department of Justice, is from a July 14, 2014 press release, which says, and I will quote it to you, "The Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department will no longer honor immigration detainer requests unless one of the following conditions is met: [inaudible] cause for that detainer or two, a warrant from a judicial officer. Metro continues to work with our federal law enforcement partners and to continue to provide professional services to the Las Vegas community regardless of their immigration status." That's what the Department of Justice cited for putting Clark County on this list, that is just for further review. Sheriff Lombardo responded to this with a letter in August explaining their compliance procedures and questioning why they were called out for additional review. So this administration has not taken, this, the Obama administration, has not taken any action further on this. However, just two days ago, the Chair of the House Appropriations Subcommittee on Justice said that he had talked to the Trump team about this Office of the Inspector General report, and he said, and I'm quoting again, "President Trump and Attorney General Sessions," who of course is not yet the Attorney General and has to be approved by the Senate, "can throw the light switch I've created and turn off any federal law enforcement money to those 10 jurisdictions at noon on January 20." And he added that they could not only lose funding for this grant cycle, but also have to refund grants that they had previously received. So I haven't seen, since this comment two days ago, any response from the Trump team.
It's all, at this point, if I might, Miss Graham, the thing to me is, he will take office on, the President-elect will take office on the 20th, then all of his nominations have to go to the Congress for approval, some may pass, some may not, at which point, nothing's in place, and it's all, just all up in the air for us, until when? May? May 1st? When are we really going to have the concrete decisions of, first of all, that his appointments have been affirmed, and two, now that we're getting down to the issues of what affects all of this? May?
Well, it could be January 20th. It's unclear to me if they actually have the authority to do that without an Attorney General in place heading up the Department of Justice.
If I may, Mayor Brian McEnellin, again, with the city of Las Vegas. We have seen some credible publications in Washington, D.C., which have suggested that the administration may take this up on his first day in office. Could be in the inauguration speech, it could be issued by executive order. So that is, again, another reason why we're highlighting this issue to such a degree for counsel, because this is one thing that we may have to deal with within the first three weeks of January.
But Mr. McEnellin, don't all of his recommendation nominations have to be confirmed by the Congress? So nothing is until that happens?
Well, if he did this by executive order, it would have, it would have the force of law, and we would have to then figure out how we comply and how we handle this.
And this would, this would also mean that the entire state of California would lose all of its Department of Justice funding as well, which is hard to imagine how that would work.
And if I may, just to get this on the record, again, Brian McEnellin, I've talked to our Public Safety Department. We currently employ the 287G program, which is out of the Department of Justice, and the Immigration, or I'm sorry, yeah, Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement Agency. We contact ICE in our detention facility and work with the agency to handle what they would call an immigration hold. So that is, again, another reason why we believe that the city of Las Vegas is fully compliant with this issue, but, you know, there may be activity that we have to take in early January to address that.
And I do believe a number of other jurisdictions are looking at litigation as--
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I know there's a timeline here, and anybody can say anything's going to happen. Well, until it happens and it's confirmed, it's just another rumor.
Let me talk to one of the opportunities that we might have in the new Trump administration. He's proposed, the President-elect has proposed a $1 trillion infrastructure, $1 trillion infrastructure package. We've seen only the broad outlines at this point, and of course, Congress will have to refine and revise the package. And of course, it will probably go through the House, it will definitely go through the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee, where we have Congresswoman Titus currently sitting. As it currently stands, the infrastructure proposal relies heavily on public-private partnerships and tax credits, which likely can't result in the broad kind of infrastructure package encompassing surface transportation ports, aviation, water sewer, and broadband that is envisioned by the President-elect. So discussions have already started in some circles about a longer-term funding mechanism, that may or may not happen. And there will also be a push towards tax reform in this Congress. Potentially, tax reform could pay for a portion of the infrastructure package, but it may also be a vehicle for repatriation of overseas taxes or reduction in tax rates, et cetera. Regardless, tax reform could endanger some of the local government's most important tools, such as the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds, which we will vigorously defend, potentially the low-income housing tax credit, and the New Markets Tax Credit. On the other hand, it might also provide an opportunity, potentially to be the vehicle of an expansion of the low-income housing tax credit and some other essential tools that we use. We also anticipate the rollback of many regulations and executive orders promulgated during the Obama administration, many of which, like the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals, the Clean Power Plan, and the Waters of the U.S. and others, are already stalled in the courts. Yucca Mountain, with the departure of both--
A question, if I might--
Yes, absolutely.
--from Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. You brought up these, the regulations, you know, the, one of the things I think the city of Las Vegas has done a great job in the last few years is really going through and getting rid of regulations and licensing that hinder businesses and streamlining businesses coming to the city of Las Vegas. When it comes to these regulations, I know he's promised to get rid of, you know, really stupid regulations that are out there by the federal government. I think it would be a pretty good exercise for us as a city to go through and identify federal regulations that hinder how we do business and hinder how people in our community do business, and put those together and take them to Washington and say, hey, you promised to get rid of these ones that are a problem for us. Well, here's a list of them. Let's see what you can do with them. Let's see what you can do to get rid of them. And I know you mentioned a couple yesterday in briefing, but I think that'd be a good exercise to go through and come up with that list. So if you could do that, I'd be interested to see what's on there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilman, we already, my firm has compiled a list of some of the regulations that we believe are on the Trump, on President-elect Trump's list of regulations to roll back, so we can share that with the city, and you can use that as the basis to overlay city regulations that you're interested in having.
Good point.
Two quick other last things that are sort of our key federal agenda issues before I turn it over to Brian to go into our package. One is Yucca Mountain, and with the departure of both Senator Reed, who, because of his position as both Senate Majority Leader and Senate Minority Leader, and the Obama administration, there will be a renewed interest in Congress and potentially the new administration to pursue providing funds for the National Regulatory Commission licensing proceedings for Yucca Mountain. The city is staunchly opposed, as is our congressional delegation, to high-level nuclear waste facility at Yucca Mountain, and we will work with our delegation to pursue legislation that was introduced already in this last Congress on consent-based citing. The Obama Department of Energy had made strides on this approach, too. We'll see where that goes under the new administration. And this approach may provide some relief from the intense pressure to open Yucca Mountain. And we will continue to work with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Mayor, I know you've been very engaged with that for years, our region and other allies in the state, to point out the dangers of the transportation of nuclear waste and to oppose a high-level nuclear waste facility. And then, last but not least, public lands. We are still working on addressing easements at Tulley Springs and issues with BLM on parcels in the northwest part of the city. We are working with multiple agencies in southern Nevada to address these public lands issues, and we'll work with new leadership once they are announced at the Department of Interior and the Bureau of Land Management. We will work to preserve the efficiency of the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, which has been of huge benefit to the city and may be in potential trouble as the new Congress moves forward. In conclusion, it's an honor to work with you all, and unless you have any further questions, I will turn it over to Brian McEnellin to discuss the agenda.
Thank you. Yes. Councilwoman and Councilman Coffin.
I just, oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. With Harry Reid gone, in the position he had of high authority, with all the Republican situation and everything so political right now, and Nevada being one of the very few that went Democrat, do you foresee a hard time for us in getting through with our requests? My concern is, they may not even pay attention to us. You know, are they--
Well, I think, I think, you know, we have Senator Heller and Congressman Amade, who are very well-positioned Republicans, who are very highly respected, who I think will be very engaged with this new administration and with the new Congress to work on our behalf.
I'm glad you think that.
Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
Thanks, Mayor. On that last note, I'm confident that Senator Heller and Congressman Amade will do their best. I've served with both of them, and I think maybe Councilman Beard did, too, and so we know the depth of their feelings on these particular issues that concern us. It's a nonpartisan issue, and for that reason, I, you know, people upstate, as well as in the neighboring states, are going to help us on that. It isn't just us, it's Orrin Hatch in Utah and some others who are downwinders and realize the dangers there. On the issue of sanctuary cities, I'm glad Councilwoman Tarkanian brought that issue up, because I've heard we are a so-called sanctuary city, but it sounds like there's different kinds. I need to know, what is the difference, and what are we? I don't know if our legal counsel is not even here right now, but, you know, maybe the city manager is. I can, where? I don't know. I want to put you on the spot, Betsy. Let me just say this about the kind of terminology that's used. It must be, there must be some symbolic words that have been said, because, like Councilwoman Tarkanian, I don't think we've voted on that. Well-meaning people will come to us and say, we've got to make this a sanctuary city, which would require an official vote of some kind. But if that vote would be in contravention of our oath, which is to uphold the ordinances and the state and local statutes, federal statutes, then we'd have a real problem, wouldn't we? Because we would be essentially violating our oath. So if someone asked me to take, to vote for something that would be in contravention to even an unpopular federal statute, I'd have to say, no, I couldn't do it. Or I would have to resign, depending on, you know, what happened at that moment. I think that's the big, big thing. So if there is a symbolic sanctuary city going on here, and it means well, it does, for sure, then I'm in favor of that. But be very careful on something that would put us in breach of federal law and regulations, because that, that won't wash with me, much as I might like to every now and then. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, we believe that we currently are not a sanctuary city, because we are in compliance with current law, current federal law. If they change the definition of a sanctuary city, that may make, that may capture us somehow in a very broad definition. But that's, that we're keeping a very, very close eye on this.
Mayor, counsel, again, Brian McEnellin. Thank you, Councilman Coffin, for those statements and getting that on the record. You know, it is a concern for the city and all of the other cities in southern Nevada. You know, just to reemphasize, there is not a standard definition of what sanctuary city means. As Vicky pointed out, there were nine different bills this last session that chose to define sanctuary cities differently. So that is one of the largest problems we have. But all of them relate to whether or not there's compliance with the DOJ's sections.
One, thanks, Brian. Add one thing. I don't think we're going to have much of a rush. I don't blame the President-elect for wanting to rush his confirmation, get confirmation of his appointees. That makes sense, although there might be some that will be delayed, because it will just take one senator to force 60 votes as opposed to a majority. So, you know, I think it'll be more of an educational process on the part of the majority party, trying to help them understand how certain things work, because there's a lack of governance experience in this group that keeps getting mentioned, and they're well-intentioned, and I know, understand that there has to be changes, and they're going to make them. But on the other hand, you can only change so many things, and you can't do it just that easily. So I'm kind of feeling sorry for the majority Republican Party in the Senate right now, because they're going to have to resist and slow down some of those ideas until they have a chance to really take them to school.
Mayor and counsel, if we might, we'll go through the agenda at a very high level, so you understand the details of that, and then we'll ask for acceptance of our report and adoption of the agenda. First of all, as a reminder, this is the agenda for the 115th Congress, which is a two-year cycle in Washington, D.C., so this, this agenda would last for those entire two years. In January of 2018, we will provide you with some updates of the activities from the first year in Congress and changes that we might anticipate for the next Congress, but would provide that to you and not necessarily ask for a vote, because you've already adopted the primer and direction with this document. We go through a process of meeting with all of you, as well as the departments, and soliciting the concerns, the programs, the issues that we need to work on as a city. The priorities that are in this agenda are 95% of the priorities that were in the 114th agenda as well, obviously reflecting the updates to the activities that Vicky mentioned in Yucca Mountain. And we do have a new section in sanctuary cities, and Councilwoman, that may help you, you know, as an ongoing basis. It is a document that provides sort of the process that we've gone under and dealt with over the last year or so. We also, as I mentioned, have updated the various activities with Yucca Mountain, from the congressional hearings that have happened, the consent-based activities, and what we anticipate going forward. We clearly take a position that we oppose Yucca Mountain and prefer a consent-based citing process, which is the law of the land right now, and certainly a policy that this Department of Energy is upholding. We'll have to see how that carries out going forward. Mayor, you asked some questions about marijuana under our business licensing section within this agenda. We talked about those issues and mentioned that we will be obviously paying a great deal of attention to that in Washington to see whether or not there is any movement in there, but based on what we heard.
Apropos of that comment, we have had a very patient lady who's here quite frequently with us by the name of Ms. Samuelson, and she had some brief questions in the federal level on this agenda, item 42, and then again on 43, which is the state. So if you want to take a microphone down there at the end and make your comments or ask your questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, for the record. My name is Mona Lisa Samuelson, and I am the most dedicated medical marijuana patient advocate and community activist here in southern Nevada. And I just want to say thank you very much for the inclusion on the legislative agenda. I took note of that. And I just want to point out to all of us, because I know that we're all aware, and I know that I have all your support, I know that the city of Las Vegas is really going to get the understanding of how to regulate medical marijuana the right way, because you take the time to listen to your constituents, and that's really what it's going to require, as you know. And so I'm here, just once again, to remind you that the old policy was clearly stated that they were not going to go after medical marijuana. Now we have the passing of question two, and it becomes probably more important than ever that-- ever that we have a base that listens to the needs of medical marijuana. Because as you know now, as I keep telling you for the past three years, we have set up a fabulous regulation for the recreational use of marijuana, and now it's time to fine-tune it to the needs of the patients. And so I'm here to, once again, on a federal situation, remember the seriousness of what we're dealing with, and I'll be back on item number 43. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I thought you might have a question pertaining to that, but please continue then.
Mayor, Council, I just want to reemphasize again, we'll be working closely with our new Nevada delegation, the new faces in the delegation, to advance this agenda and the appropriate agencies, and may have many of you back in D.C. having those conversations with the new cabinet. I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to thank Senator Harry Reid, our senior senator, for all of the years that he has spent protecting Nevada and helping us with all of our issues in southern Nevada. We appreciate his dedicated tenure to the state, and I, you know, as an individual, I am going to deeply miss him, and I think all of Nevada, Nevada will as well. But we welcome him back home in his retirement. And we also, with the departure of Congressman Heck and Congressman Hardy, have lost some strong advocates in Washington, D.C., and we wish them the best in retirement as well. But I want that, I just want to state on record how helpful they have been over the last couple congressional cycles. And with that, we would ask for acceptance of the report and adoption of our federal agenda.
Mayor Protem, any comments, questions before I ask Mayor Protem on this? Okay, please, Mayor Protem. Make a motion.
On agenda item 42, I'd move to accept this report and adopt this legislative agenda for the 115th Congress.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 42. Please vote and please post. Thank you very much. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Coming. Happy holidays. All right, we're on to agenda item 43, report and discussion for possible action on the 2017 state legislative platform for the 79th legislative session, reference all wards.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, again, Brian McEnam, Government Affairs, City of Las Vegas. With me are several members of our team that will be representing you over the next legislative cycle. I would like to ask, of course, Kelly Martinez, who will be up in Carson City with me, as well as Rebecca Holder. Rebecca Holder is joining us in the strategic analyst position from the IT Department. We appreciate that department helping us out by lending us Rebecca for the next year. Down here in Las Vegas, while we're up in Carson City, we will be strongly supported by everyone else in the city manager's office, and Ted Alivas running point down here for us with Jennifer Lances. I would also like to acknowledge all the departments that will be participating and responding to individual bills and helping us guide our positions as we deal with the onslaught of 1,300 bills in the legislative session. We will have a new legislative tracking system that all of the departments are engaged in helping us work through, and that will be extremely helpful as we tackle this next session. I need to call out the efforts of the IT Department, specifically Michael Sherwood, Pat Cabrera, and on the Administrative Services Department, Jennifer Hensley, for all of their help in putting together what was a monster of a program and developing a new software system for us to achieve our ends. And I appreciate all those efforts and the time that went into that. I would like to now ask Bob Ostrowski to do an election analysis impact from our state perspective and what that means for us in Carson City, and then I'll ask Kelly Martinez to sort of present our agenda. And of course, we'll be here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Bob Ostrowski with it for our group.
Good morning.
Good morning. For Councilwoman Tarkanian, my parents and grandparents both worked on Mare Island during the war. And so we have some common, I'm sure your husband must have been, your parents were assigned there by either a Navy ship or a...
Gosh, I haven't heard that since we were at Mare Island in the Navy housing.
It, you'll see in your packet information about leadership. Clearly, there have been some changes the Democrat majority has taken in both the Senate and the Assembly. Senator Ford will be the new Majority Leader. You have a list in your packet of the other various individuals, including Kevin Atkinson, who will be the Assistant Majority Leader. They'll be key leadership in pursuing matters in the Senate. The Assembly, Jason Fryerson, will be the new Speaker, and we look forward to working with Jason. As you know, he lost the prior election and was reelected this time, but back to a seat he previously held. And I think there was great recognition of his leadership by the entire Assembly, which is going to elect him. He's the Speaker-in-waiting. He'll be elected on the first day when they arrive in Carson City. What's really important are the numbers, as everyone knows here. There are 27 Democrats and 14 Republicans in the Assembly, always remembering the important number is really 28. It takes two-thirds majority of both houses to pass any matter involving taxes or fees. And if, as we suspect, property tax issues may be very important to this council and in the forefront of discussions in Carson City, it will take 28 votes to move any such change that is agreed upon out of that House. So it takes both Democrats and Republicans. The Senate, the division there is now 11 Democrats, nine Republicans, and one nonpartisan. Senator Farley, who was a registered Republican, has changed her registration to nonpartisan. She has indicated publicly that she'll caucus with the Democrats. If that is the case, then the Democrats will have 12 members in their caucus and nine members in the Republican. The important number there, again, is 14. Two-thirds majority is 14 votes in the Senate. So it will take bipartisan support to move any bill that has a fee or a tax change in it. And many of the bills that we deal with don't require a two-thirds majority, and I would argue that almost 99 percent of those will pass in some form, both houses, with the support of both parties, because normally those things are worked out in committee. By the time they get to the floor of the Senate or the Assembly, there's some agreement on how those things will move forward or not move forward and never leave a committee. However, on a tax bill and property tax, it was just, I can't remember how many meetings ago, just a few meetings ago, when Jeremy Aguero took you through the whole issue on property tax. That will require that bipartisan number of 28 in the Assembly and 14 in the Senate. However, I do believe that once that bill gets to the governor's office, I don't know if it's for sure, but I believe the governor would be willing to sign such a bill if we could reach some agreement, bipartisan agreement, that would move that along. I think you also have a list in your materials of those folks who represent the city, either in the Assembly or the Senate. I won't go through their names. They're all listed here. If they're not on this list, it means they clearly represent only a county or represent a county outside of Clark, most of which are in Washoe. We have a few rural representatives, but through redistricting, the rural delegation gets smaller all the time. I meet with them, try to meet with them weekly. They have a weekly breakfast meeting in Carson City of all the rural legislators, including those who have an interest in rurals, even though they may be from an urban area. So we try to watch out for our rural neighbors, some of which reach all the way down. We know that Senator Gocicchia, for example, actually reaches into the city of Las Vegas. Everyone views him as a rural member of the rural caucus, but the matter of fact is he does represent folks within the city.
On the far west side.
Far west side, yeah. As he moves, his district kind of moves over to Perump and captures a little bit of the far west side. Do you want to go through the topics?
Yes. Kelly?
Good morning. For the record, Kelly Martinez with the City of Las Vegas. Very briefly, before we get into the agenda, I want to remind you, we were in front of you in August where we did approve the city BDRs. They now have bill numbers. So SB 60 revises provisions governing Medicaid payments for ground emergency and medical transportation services. We'll see that bill in Senate Health and Human Services. SB 67 revises provisions relating to fire safety requirements for multi-story buildings occupied by people. We'll see that in Senate Government Affairs. And then AB 70 revises provisions concerning the use of certain revenues in redevelopment areas. We'll see that in the Assembly Government Affairs Committee. We'll walk around later this afternoon to make sure that you all get, as promised, copies of these bills and the language now that we do have them. Next page. These are our legislative agenda priority topics, so not a lot has changed here from the last legislative session. But we have provided all of you with the legislative agenda and have met with all of the departments and all of you and all of your staff to go over those legislative priorities. The agenda that we are asking for consideration for today for approval itemizes out those agenda items, but remember that as we get bills and as we determine which bills we will be interacting with, we will go through our internal process of getting those bills to departments that they affect, going through an internal review department, and then coming up with city positions. This will be used as a guideline to those positions, but we will be making those determinations with the departments. And then, just very briefly, I would be remiss if we didn't thank Bob Ostrowski for his long-term service to the City of Las Vegas. We're excited to work with him again this legislative session, and he comes with a wealth of knowledge, so we are grateful for, for our group and for Bob Ostrowski's.
How many years has it been, Mr. Ostrowski?
When the prior mayor first came into office, I don't know how many years ago that is. That's 14 or so, I think.
Eighteen. Eighteen years.
Eighteen. Time flies.
Especially when you're having fun.
So at this time, we're happy to answer any questions. We do ask that we have approval of this document to guide us through the legislative process this session.
Which is over there on the bar for the public, if they'd like to see.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to invite Ms. Samuelson back up because I saw on here, where did, I did see it, oh, there it is, first column, last item. Let her get in her plea to you all.
Can't wait to see you there. All right. Good afternoon. For the record, once again, my name is Mona Lisa Samuelson, and I am your friendly neighborhood medical marijuana patient activist, community advocate. Okay. I'm here, hopefully, to drum up some help because I put through some work with Tick Seggerboom to draft a medical marijuana patients' bill of rights. And that is going to include home grows because, as I tell you, medical marijuana isn't about getting a fine old bud and smoking it and having a good time. It's about a plant. And how long it grows and how long it cooks really affects you medicinally and whether or not you get high. You can use that plant and never get high, and the way that you purchase it in a dispensary, that's not true. They sell CBD from a hemp plant, which is not the same thing. So I need your help. We do not have a medical program in place right now. Until we have the sale of fresh plants and seeds and that regulated, we don't have a medical marijuana program. We have a great distribution model for recreational use, so I need some help from you guys, some backup. The medical marijuana patients' bill of rights is the most important thing for us as a community to make sure we're safe, not just for us, but now for these businesses that we've now allowed in, and they're under pressure to do the right thing. So let's all work together. That's what I'm here to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, excuse me, Mona Lisa, yeah, the painting.
Uh-huh.
That's what I always think of.
Yay!
Mona Lisa, you might ask, Tick.
Yes.
Why does he have to rush so fast? Why doesn't he give us some time to do this the right way, which he has not done? We got the medical marijuana, which was needed. We put in some rules, regulations, and so forth. Some we found were very good, some we found needed changing, but we needed time. Before we even had time to do that decently, he pushes in the recreational marijuana. Even though we have Colorado's governor and mayor of Denver saying, "Take your time," you know, "Just do this very carefully" because of problems they've had. I'd just like you to tell...
Councilwoman Tarkanian, I've got to tell you, all the patients feel the exact same way that you do. The thing is, we have to work with what we're given. And I have to tell you, when these people came into an industry, a lot of them, I don't think, understood the proper use of medical marijuana. And I think some of our poor patient advocacy is to blame for that because they're so ready to get into an industry. And as you know, I'm the only one who's not getting into an industry because I have such an important message. There's things that people do that don't make any explanation. The best we can do is all work together to make it better. And Councilwoman Tarkanian, I'm with you all the way. I feel the exact same way I do. And I'm worried, too. That's why I'm really in need of all your help.
I just wish we had a little more time. We could have done it, you know, the way you're talking about for medical before we moved on to the other.
Absolutely. There's a lot of issues.
And maybe I'll see him at the mayor's house.
Yeah.
You don't have to go for it.
Thank you so much, Mona Lisa.
For the record, Bob Ostrowski is to comment. We will certainly work with Senator Farley and Senator Seggerboom, who seem to be the two leading members in Carson City on these issues, try to portray and to them the concerns that we have as a regulatory body. They are constrained, of course, by the passage of the question, which had language in it, which they have to live with now. So I really don't know where it's going to go exactly, but I understand, Councilwoman, your concerns about the speed of light that this seemed to have moved at. But, you know, the legislature will have to comply with the will of the people, and they will also have to do it in a way that is reasonable for council members and county commissioners and other folks. Metro people have a responsibility for the implementation of these new laws.
Well, and that's be in compliance with the federal government as well, so there's a lot out there. Thank you very much. All right, so are you ready? Any comments, questions here? Are you ready for a motion from us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would...
Oh, but wait. Don't you want to ask about that? After. Should we take it firsthand?
I'm just going to say this about this. We can already recognize, as Ms. Wells shared with us yesterday, bills that may be damaging to the city. So I think we just need to be prepared for anything like that that comes our direction and looking at what's been published so far. So I'm just going to say that today, and I would move, Your Honor, to accept this report.
And before the vote, I'd just like to emphasize on what you said, Mr. Ross, because a couple of, at least one big bill that's in there now, does not even seem to make sense as far as reflecting the rights of individuals who live in the cities. And if you could let us know with whom we should speak or what we should do, I feel all of us on this council are going to need to really put that effort in. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for that support. Again, I would move to accept this report and to accept this 2017 state legislative platform for the 79th session. That's my motion.
There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And take your earmuffs and gloves, and thank you very much for your continuing service.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
All right, we are on to agenda item 44, report by, and that did pass if I did say it was unanimous, by city staff and discussion for possible action on the city by design, SBD, strategic framework which brings together all of the high-level strategies for six major plans in one final document, which coordinates the city's four strategic priorities and master plans for the medical district and downtown over the next 30 years. This is in reference to all wards.
Good morning. Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager. What I wanted to do this morning was give you a very brief overview of the history, the process, the engagement that we've gone through relative to city by design, what the plans and strategies are that we've completed through that process, and then how we've taken all that information and put it into a more concise strategic framework with more concise goals that gives the city, our residents, and our city staff a better guide for monitoring the progress as we move forward in the implementation of this effort. I'm going to touch a little bit... I'm going to touch a little bit on the strategy and outcomes matrix and then give you some examples of those and then talk a little bit about next steps. What I'm really discussing is the document that we provided each of you, you know, last week, and I, before I get too far into this, I would be remiss to not acknowledge all the effort that's gone into City by Design. We have a huge staff team. They're all acknowledged in the back of the report that have put in just hundreds of hours managing all of the things that have come under City by Design. I particularly want to thank Miles Dixon with JA Barrett, who helped write a good portion of this document, helped us put all this together, and Tammy Christensen, who is a strategic analyst to manage City by Design through the process, was very helpful to me in terms of being a right-hand person to help coordinate a lot of the efforts.
Thank you both very much. Thank you.
The history, in 2013, you had a council workshop, it actually was over two half-days, where you helped develop the city's vision and action plans for where we wanted to go. Out of that workshop, you developed four council priorities: economic diversification and opportunities, education, public safety with an emphasis on law enforcement, which we morphed into a focus on homelessness and transportation. You directed us at that time to take on those priorities, reach out and engage the community in development of those priorities. Because those are very complex issues, some of those, we did that. We worked closely in putting on stakeholder groups, recognized experts and leaders in the community in each of those subject areas. And so City by Design brought together hundreds of people and thousands of hours of work over the last three years. It has really been an incredible labor involving not just city folk, but all of our citizens, a lot of our stakeholders, in visioning the future of the city. What we've done with this document was provide a single framework to provide residents, stakeholders in the city, a basis for shared understanding, alignment, action, and success. We've organized hundreds of findings from six plans and strategies into three primary goals, and then we've identified, coming out of all those different plans and strategies, strategies and tactics for implementation, along with objectives and outcomes we expect to achieve. So this is in the document that we presented to you, and it really kind of shows all this, how it all works. You had your four council priorities of education, economic diversification, transportation, and public safety. Those flowed into committees that we put together with a lot of community engagement and participation. Same way with major plans and initiatives. We had a downtown master plan, a medical district master plan, and if you remember, the strong cities, strong communities competition, which we haven't let go of, those moved forward with a lot of citizen engagement. A lot of people were involved in all these efforts. We did a lot of outreach meetings. So all those have culminated into a number of plans and strategies. You've seen all these. They come to you for approval. A number of these plans have been approved, the medical district plan, the downtown master plan, the mobility plans, and a lot of the strategies have been presented to you previously, many times more than once, over past council meetings. All of that now gets consolidated at a high level for visioning into three primary goals: connected vibrant city, economic prosperity, and leadership and partnerships. So I'll just touch on each of those individually. In the area of the goal of a connected vibrant city, the goal was a distinct and significant city centers will be connected to one another, people and commerce through a balanced multimodal transportation system. Residents and businesses will thrive, and our city will be more livable and sustainable. Under that goal are a number of objectives that all come out of all these various plans and strategies dealing with connecting and creating a vibrant city. I won't go into each one of those individually. Likewise, economic prosperity, the goal was targeted industries, a skilled workforce, and quality places will fuel a diverse and ever-growing economic base. In this resilient economy, Las Vegas can get and keep good-paying jobs and businesses of all types will flourish. Again, a number of objectives under that goal, again tying back to each of those initiatives that we worked on, in particular in the area of economic prosperity, the economic development strategies, the downtown master plan, and the medical district plan. In leadership and partnerships, this was one that kind of cuts across all of them and recognized that the City of Las Vegas will effectively and efficiently lead implementation of city by design plans, coordinating and partnering throughout the region and across the public, private, and nonprofit sectors to increase impact. This is one that really goes without saying. We've got to embrace this to get it all done, and it recognizes we have to be efficient, and we can't do it alone. We're going to have to involve partnerships to make that happen. So in the back of the document, and you all each, as I said, have a final draft document, there are tables that are really maps that map where each of these goals and objectives that you find in this framework tie back to your four priorities and the individual plan or strategy that you've already approved or seen. And this is really kind of a roadmap to help our citizens understand how all this comes together and interconnects. So this, for example, this is just an example because there's actually several tables in the back dealing with connected and vibrant city. It kind of shows axes where it ties to each of your priorities, and then it stipulates what's the primary plan that it actually came out of. Same way with the outcomes. Outcomes are those statements that we want to accomplish in various time periods, and again, we're doing the same thing. Next to each of those statements, we're indicating where it ties to each of your priorities, and again, back to that primary plan that was part of City by Design. And I'm going to give you a couple examples of outcomes and how they thread all the way through, and each of the outcome statements and each section under each of those goal categories, there's numerous outcomes. They're grouped by things we want to get done in the next three to five years, in the next five to 10 years, and then more visionary beyond 10 years. I'm using an example here of the Las Vegas Medical District. In the next three to five years, we're saying the new UNLV School of Medicine will be open in LVMDA, and the inaugural class will be halfway to graduation. Now, that one is pretty well done, but as it, as we walk it through the future, then we start to speak to what the medical district will look like in terms of higher-density uses, new teaching, medical and research centers, and then a more livable place. And then when we walk that through, there's a visionary statement that says, "The Las Vegas Medical District will be the clinical care, research, wellness, education, and training center of Southern Nevada, the premier academic medical district in southwestern U.S." That's the outcome. The goal strategically for the medical district is to be the premier center in the southwest part of the United States. Likewise, there's one, I'll give you another example, in economic development and economic prosperity. We're saying in the next three to five years, we'll increase occupancy in existing retail, office, and industrial spaces, but then when we start to walk that through over five to 10 years, we're going to say, we're saying we're going to accomplish at least 1,000 new jobs per year. We'll be added to the local economy, and then we'll acquire, entitle, plan, and develop one business park to house new or expanding businesses. That is underway right now as we speak. We've been looking hard at properties in the northwest. As you know, we've been granted property, an entire section in the Tulie Springs Land Bill. We're master planning that for development as a business park, and so we're staying on track to make sure we accomplish this outcome during the stated time period. And then when you take that out beyond 10 years, we've recruited companies in targeted industries such as technology and medicine, and they'll account for a substantial increase in employment. The goal here, and remember, we started a lot of this coming out of the recession, was diversification of the economy, to put some additional legs under the stool so we're not dependent solely on gaming and entertainment as a primary economic base in the region. So this is one example of many outcomes that you'll find throughout this document. So to conclude, going forward, what are we going to do going forward with this? We're going to integrate this into Results Vegas, our city's new performance management system. We're going to make sure that all these outcomes, particularly those in the short run, that are in the next three to five years, find their way into individual departmental business plans and all the work we do in the city to make sure they get done. As I've stated, over the next several years, many of these are going to get done. In fact, we're on track with a lot of these, such that they are being done and will be done very soon. So for that reason, it's going to be important for you as a council to revisit this strategy in the next two to three years, and then with a mind to the fact that it probably needs to be expanded to be more comprehensive. I have to make a statement here that this is simply a strategic framework for all those things we did under City by Design. It doesn't encompass everything we do as a city strategically. For example, it doesn't embrace, fully embrace sustainability, and we're one of the most sustainable cities in the world. It doesn't fully embrace neighborhood development and so forth. There are other things that are not in it that probably need to be in it and will need to revisit in a couple of years to add in, to make it a truly strategic document, a living, breathing thing that guides how we move the city forward from a visionary standpoint. So with that--
Excuse me?
Yes.
Is culture in there, cultural development?
It would be. Now, cultural is, it will find its way in a number of the things. As you know, we've got a big component, a cultural development component in the downtown master plan. We've certainly touched on it in the medical district plan, but it, again, to make it fully comprehensive, we'll probably need to look at it in a broader, more citywide view. It is, this document is citywide, although admittedly, there are a couple plans that are focused on downtown. Not everything in it is just downtown. There are issues that are being addressed throughout the city. I'd be glad to answer any questions. At this point, we have a team that can answer any individual questions on the individual elements, and with that being said, you've seen all these, you've adopted a lot of these previously, and staff recommends approval of this as your strategic framework going forward for City by Design.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of comments and questions. As you were going through that presentation, Mr. Adams, I saw, again, sitting back in our little workshop we just had with the Planning Commission in regards to form-based planning, I see that fitting into this equation somehow as you continue to move forward with this, and I just want to throw that out there as an observation.
It absolutely does. The Form-Based Code flows out of the downtown master planning process that recommended we go forward to accomplish our mixed-use hubs and the division for the downtown master plan through a regulatory mechanism, a new one, which is a Form-Based Code. So it's an absolute tie and outcome of what we did with the downtown master planning process.
So then this will go along parallel with that, I would imagine--
Absolutely.
--as we get to the end goal at the end of the day.
Yes.
So, all right. If there's nothing else, Your Honor and councilmembers, I would move to accept this presentation.
Thank you very much. As a motion to accept this really grand presentation, thank you again for all that you've done to make this so thorough for us, and we look forward to the future of it. This motion, please vote and please post. Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 45. Presentation by city staff on city's innovation and technology direction, including the ongoing project EDDI, Electronic Development Department Integration, a multi-year program to update the functions and systems for all departments at the Development Services Center, DSC, all wards, and I'm going to ask, what is the cost and over how long, please, as you go into it, Mr. Serantes?
Certainly, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Jorge Serantes, Executive Director for Community Development. This is our annual update of what we call Project EDDI, which is really the automation of the development service function to better serve our customers, make it more efficient, more automated. The cost, Mayor, you're asking, it's a multi-year program. The total budget is $8 million over about a four-year period. We're a little over halfway through with the implementation. A lot of things are already online and automated. The end goal is to make almost everything we do as a city be automated online, where people, if they want to come down to the Development Service Center, we'll welcome them there, help them out, but they don't have to. If they want to submit their plans online and save trip and money, they can do that. That's the intent. And so today, we're going to give you an update where we are, but it's a little bit different. Last year, we started to touch a little bit on what's called identity management, and that's where we're trying to get into technology where one of our customers, a citizen, can log in themselves and have access to multi-functions they do within the development function, where they're looking for a status in a building permit, where they're trying to submit several things, instead of having to come in every time. They come in once where they're past login and access multiple functions. In addition to that, we've got Michael Sherwood, who's going to give you a little bit of detail where we're going beyond just the Development Service Center. The development function was really just the start of a bigger project. We want to do enterprise-wide. We automate, and we add technology to everything we do as an organization. So Rick Vermani and Michael Sherwood can give a presentation where we are with both Project EDDI and where we're going in the future with that.
And also, as you can break out, the hardware costs versus the other costs that would be more of the theoretical, you know, consulting costs, but what is the actual hardware cost? I would imagine most of that goes in upfront, and so how many years, you said, a four-year project?
It's about a four-year program. We're in about year or three right now, but and so Rick will give you a little, touch a little bit about where we're at with that.
Thank you very much. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good morning. For the record, my name is Rick Vermani, DSC Systems Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Michael Sherwood, Director of Information Technologies, and I'd like to introduce one of our newest employees on the center here. This is an artificial intelligence-based speaker that we've worked with based on your guidance through allowing the Project EDDI program to go forward. We have a little demonstration to sort of show you throughout the presentation of how this technology can be used. So I'm going to use a key phrase to activate it, and then I'm actually going to ask it to introduce itself to the city council. So Alexa, ask my Vegas to introduce-- Always live demo sometimes. Let me try one more time here. Alexa, please ask my Vegas to introduce yourself to the city council.
I wasn't able to understand--
We'll try one more. Here we go. Alexa, ask my Vegas to introduce yourself to the city council.
Hello, my name is Alexa, and I have worked in information technologies here at the City of Las Vegas for three months. It is my honor to be here today.
Yep, that, there's a lot more of that to come, actually. We've, we have this as a follow-up of innovation and technology from last year when we started this whole effort with, at the NR DSC, but here we are going to get into a lot more and going to give you an update of where we are with all of this effort. Basically, derived from the goals of the city council to make Las Vegas into a business-friendly environment, we embarked on a very large effort at the NR DSC a few years ago, and those goals boil down to three basic focuses from a business perspective. Again, we want to be a customer-centric business focus, bringing cross-departmental integration, making more of these processes seamless, and making the transactions less, with less friction. We want to get those barriers out of the way, make things move quickly for the customers. So based on these business goals, we looked at the technologies that were going to support us and get us there. So for those goals, from the business side, we call them getting in touch with the customer, high-touch with the customer. On this side, we call these high-tech goals, or citizen identity management is the first key technology that we're going to use, and I'll talk a little bit more about this down the road. Multi-channel citizen engagement, this basically means using mobile, web, and IVR and things like our friend here to conduct business with the city. And finally, making government processes pervasive. We ultimately want to embed government functions into the functions outside of government-- We ultimately want to embed government functions into the functions outside of government that we serve. Like permitting and licensing are not ends in themselves, they are a function to serve the businesses that are doing work with us here in the city. So we're calling this overall strategy to deliver technology to the business goals, we're calling it High Tech for High Touch. The idea means that we are using this guiding force to focus our technology efforts to get us closer to the customer.
So what you see at the chart in front of you is what people expect as far as a, it's not saying government's not providing the right services, but it's, people expect more. People expect things to be easy, as with Amazon, the same type of relationship they have with commercial services, to be just as easy when they interface with government. And while I think this chart here shows local government at 66, I think our offerings already, and what you're going to see, some of the technologies we're bringing out and bringing forward and in your future, really elevate us to a higher level than the typical standard municipality throughout the United States. Again, the biggest thing that customers want is the experience. What do they really want? They want an easy process with a great experience, something that's easy to use, whether it be through their mobile phone, through their computer. It's putting the power of the citizen or the individual in their hands and letting them decide how they want to interface with government. And so with that, I'm going to go ahead and give you a little example, hopefully it's temperamental, of our intern here, about how we really think voice automation and artificial intelligence will work.
I've been noticing over the past month, an Alexa format advertised a lot on television. Is that exactly the same thing that we're going to be looking at here? I mean, actually, even this morning with audio command or questions to their robotic answer. And so I gather this is more of that implementation that ultimately is you're looking forward to replace an employee with a voice command, something?
Honorable Mayor, this device is a supplement. So it's a supplement that, and I'm going to take you through some ideas of how it would be used in your home or in your place of business in order to provide an experience to the end customer. If it's 1:00 in the morning and you have a question, these type of tools would be available to help the citizen gain information or interact with the government on a continual basis.
But at this point, this is already available to the public in the private venue, correct?
It is.
Because that's what they're advertising. So, but this is the connectivity to government from the world.
Think of this device as your cell phone, where you can download applications to your cell phone and enhance the experience. What we've done is taken off-the-shelf technology, the Amazon application that you see in front of me, the Echo, retails for about $179. What we've done is we've taken that technology, there's 5 million units sold throughout the United States, and we've added a Las Vegas-specific component to the device.
Okay.
And so anybody that buys this, you can go on to the Amazon store and download one of two applications here in the next couple of weeks. One is a Las Vegas news briefing, just like CNN, it will play a news briefing. And I can demonstrate that briefly here. So if I say, Alexa, play my news briefing. Alexa, play my news briefing.
Here's your flash briefing from the city of Las Vegas. Good morning, this is today from City Hall, and I'm Nancy Byrne. Today is Wednesday, December 7, 2016, and we're getting ready to begin our city council meeting. Today, we'll be recognizing our citizens-
Alexa, stop. So what you can think of that is every morning, people have these devices set up where they're getting news feeds from CNN, NPR, and so forth. They have the ability now to subscribe to a Las Vegas-specific city news channel, which our PIO's office is able to disseminate any type of information they choose.
So what you're saying is if I have put in a permit into DSC, I can call up and say, permit number 5,221, where am I?
Let me explain to you, let me show you and demonstrate to you how that might work. Alexa, ask my Vegas about permit number 312464. And that's an actual permit.
Permit number 312464 is an electrical-only permit for 330 Rancho Circle. The permit was requested on March 1, 2016. The current status is permit issued. The permit was issued on March 2, 2016.
I'll give you another example if you're at home Saturday afternoon or anytime and you'd like to know about your sewer bill. Alexa, Alexa, ask my Vegas about my sewer bill.
Your balance for sewer account number 2144722212 is $61.42 and is due on Thursday, December 15, 2016. Would you like to make the payment now?
Yes, I'd like to make the payment now.
Okay, sewer account number 2144722212 is scheduled for payment on Thursday, December 8, 2016, for $61.42.
So let me show you some other practical purposes that a resident or somebody may be visiting the city would want to use this type of device for. Instead of reaching for a cell phone or having to get out something or go on an internet site, we're able to actually talk and get information back. So I'm going to go ahead and ask, Alexa, ask my Vegas about parks in Ward 1 with baseball.
The following parks located in Ward 1 have baseball, Doc Romeo Park, Gary Dexter Park, and Rainbow Family Park.
So I could also, maybe I don't know who my council member is for the ward I live in, and I live in Ward 2. So I could ask, Alexa, ask my Vegas, who is my council, Alexa, ask my Vegas, who is my councilman for Ward 2?
Councilman Bob Beers represents Las Vegas residents living in Ward 2. Bob Beers was elected to represent Ward 2 in a historic special election in March 2012.
Maybe I see graffiti on my way home, so when I get home, I'd like to know, how do I report graffiti? So Alexa, ask my Vegas about, how do I, Alexa, ask my Vegas about how I report graffiti?
Please contact operations and maintenance at 702-229-1030 to report issues regarding graffiti.
So you really see, there's a lot of different possibilities with this type of artificial intelligence technology that we're able to use. The beauty of this technology, it was very simple for us to integrate based on the foundation that was started under Project EDDI. We're able to take off-the-shelf components relatively inexpensive and build an interface into our organization.
Can she go home and make my husband a Bombay Sapphire?
We'll work on that.
Not yet.
And-
Yes, please.
We're working on that one.
I actually have, Sarah and I have had an Alexa for about nine months at the house.
Oh.
We had to do some other stuff, but mostly we use it for four things. First of all, the morning news report. Second of all, it keeps the shopping list, and then the shopping list shows up on my phone when we finally get to Costco. And then we tell it, Alexa, turn on the kitchen lights, and it turns on the kitchen lights, or turn off the kitchen lights, and we have to do the same thing for the piano lights.
Remotely? I mean, you can be in-
Hands-off, but there's more investment on the light switches and stuff like that to make all that happen. But it's pretty cool, and I am like now very anxious for you to adjourn so I can go home and download this app onto my Alexa and play with it for the rest of the day.
Honorable Mayor and council members, the app that you're hearing right now is not, we have an app out now, it's a pared-down version. You're the first ones to see this functionality. We'll be submitting it to the Amazon store to be reviewed.
So should I wait?
You can go ahead and download the skill, which is the City of Las Vegas skill. And every week, we, every couple of weeks, we're adding constantly new functionality. In the past week, I'll give you a quick example. We've added all the parks within the city to the database. So now you can ask it, if I asked about parks in specific wards, let's say I don't know the ward, I'm just visiting, and I happen to go by and I see a park and I know the name, and I want to know what amenities are there. Alexa, ask my Vegas about Ed Fountain Park. Sometimes temperamental. Alexa, ask my Vegas about, Alexa, ask my Vegas about Ed Fountain Park. Well, I guess we won't ask about Ed Fountain Park. But it does have that capability and that skill there to go ahead and it would, I'll try one more time, maybe the fourth time will work here. Alexa, ask my Vegas about Ed Fountain Park.
Mayor.
Time for a divorce.
Like any technology, there's always little quirks here and there.
The sound here is also interfering, these amplifiers and things, it's not able to pick up on just one voice, so, but yeah, it does, this kind of functionality is out now, but everything you're seeing right now has to do more with general information. Customer-specific information is still to come, like, for instance, like your sewer bill, Councilman Beers. That, you'll have to create a login to the city with, and you'll have to provide that to the Alexa system. But this is just the first introduction to AI that we are seeing right now. Down the road, in fact, already, we have Google Home that's out, that does the same thing, but comes from Google. So how is the city going to keep up with all of this? That's what we started building the infrastructure for last year. Through the Project EDDI, we are really building this capability so that within weeks, as the next best thing comes out, we can adopt it and make it available to everybody out there.
And you have to build in the security as you go, I'm sure, because-
Yes.
I do not want Mr. Beers, Councilman Beers, sewer bill or any other bills.
That's a very good question, and that's what I spoke about earlier, is called identity management. We have to manage the identity of our citizens, but we'll be doing it in a very secure and seamless way so that we do not compromise anything at all. And we'll talk a little bit more about that.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you.
I'd ask you one last question.
Yeah, generally, again, I guess, maybe I should have paid more attention at the beginning, but is this meant to be a public interface with the city?
Yes, it is. It is public as from, from anything that we want to put out through this.
Well, let me ask you, again, I got a series of questions building on that then. So you have to buy the machine for your house to eventually be able to use this, so that when you're looking at Alexa there and you can see her light up, that means it's okay to ask a question? And then the person will learn the prompts, or are these prompts, so, how do I want to say it, user, not user-specific, but end-target specific, like, for example, needing to know how to ask a question is just as important as asking it? So if it's not in front of you for that particular place you're visiting, like the city of Las Vegas, how do you know what to say and how to say it?
We've built in a script. So when you ask it a specific question about a park, we've built in the language of how someone would ask about a park, or how someone would ask about reporting graffiti. And we've built into the technology that Amazon provides for free to the development community. They want, they've developed this device, they want developers, government agencies, Uber, Domino's, to build interfaces to the unit. So what we've done is we've taken what we would consider, we came up with what we felt internally, what the unit, what people might want to ask. And so they want to interface with their council members. They would want to know about parks, they would want to know about how to report potholes, graffiti. So we've built that vocabulary and put that into the unit, and then we publish that through Amazon, and that's how we do that.
Okay, so now, you've talked about asking questions. What about serving commands? So call my councilman. Now, do you have to know who your council member is? Or will it say, you live at 1139 Fifth Place, and your councilman is Bob Coffin, press 1 if you want to go through, or, you know, through, or press 2 if you want to talk to his voicemail, you know? That's kind of the thing that happens in-
I'm going to answer that in two parts for you. As it stands today, the technology that we have, if we don't have, it does not have the ability to know what ward you're in. However, as we talked about paying your sewer bill, you're going to be asked about your address. And you're actually going to see in this presentation coming forward how we're going to tie this device in with your cell phone, with the website, but it will know who you are, it'll know automatically when you log in who your council representative would be. And then the device, once you logged into it and you have that personal relationship with the device, then it will know, you could say, please contact my council member. It wouldn't even, it would already know what ward and contact that council member.
Can you say that? I'd like to leave a message for my council member.
There are all types of things that we could look at exploring and doing. We're starting with the website, and the next couple of slides here will sort of show you how that's working. But the eventual long-term capabilities of this technology would be, yes, and in fact, you could leave a message, you could do, would really, any interaction that the city feels would be warranted, appropriate.
I'm just trying to give you questions that not only I would ask, but that the kind of questions we get.
Right.
And so therefore, that's trying to inject a little reality into the virtual reality or artificial reality.
Councilman, if we ask those kinds of questions, I recommend that we answer it by saying that this is AI, this is an evolving tech, technology, and it is going to get better, faster, and faster. In fact, what we've done so far is barely scratched the surface of what it can do. But as we think of new ideas, the key is that we don't want to confine ourselves to building this only for the Amazon Echo. We want to build it for Google Home, and the next thing, and the next thing, but we want to be rapid. How do we keep up with this rate of change? And so for doing that, the key is what we are building at the center of all of this. This is how we're going to deliver this technology to any other platform that comes. Before this, there was a big hype about mobile. Everybody wanted to have a mobile application, and people were scrambling. And beyond AI, there's going to be more things that come out that we will have to adapt to. So we are trying to future-proof ourselves against change so that as new technologies come out and as our citizens and customers expect these capabilities, we will have them ready for them very, very quickly.
No, just one last thing here, Mayor. I was thinking that they may not expect us to have this, they may not even want us to have it, they may not care because they most of all want to talk to a human being, and then you get there, and, you know, gee, if you're a very, in a very small percentage of people who are right on the cutting edge of these things, you may say, gee, I wish you could do this. But in reality, what we deal with, our people, generally speaking, who are not skilled at this.
And hopefully, by then, staff will have more time to address those in-person concerns because a lot of them will be offloaded to running on devices like this. So absolutely, we must serve our customers in person as well.
I'm just proud of Councilman Coffin that he owns a smartphone. That's a step in the right direction to get you there. You guys still have more of a presentation, no doubt, but as you're giving, as this discussion is going on, and you've demonstrated that, I want to make a comment. As Mr. Scott had alluded to, we are the most sustainable city in the world. I want to be the highest-tech city in the world, too. So you guys just keep going, carry on with your presentation, if you would, please.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, and we're kind of in parallel with the physical ecosystems that we are building here, this is kind of a digital ecosystem that goes hand-in-hand with that. So it's like a development on the virtual front is happening just as fast as on the physical front, if you, if I may. So in order to extend that analogy, I have a picture here of a shopping mall. This is more representative of how we deal with our customers today. Customers go from department to department, not being recognized as to who they are. Our goal is to move more towards a department-store approach, where we identify the customer as they come through the door, and we deal with them across all departments in an integrated fashion, helping them, letting them might be put their sewer bill, their permit fees into a shopping cart and check out one time. This is a radical shift in how we are looking to serve our customers, and I may add that we are one of the first cities in the country to be doing this. So this is what I call cross-departmental integration and towards what Michael referred to before as the unified customer experience, not a fragmented customer experience. So just to give you a practical example, we might have a person by the name of Mike Williams who comes and applies for a permit. That same person might register with us as Michael S. Williams as a board member and a license holder. Currently, they are two separate people in our systems. Then he might go on and be a homeowner and apply for a sewer bill account, right? And finally, he gets a parking ticket down the street. And so now he's in our system four times with four different names. Now we can deal with, have him deal with us separately on all of those, or we can create a single identity record for him. This is what we call identity- This is what we call identity management. So we're creating this database of citizen identities and, and customer identities, and then tying them down to the individual systems that, that underlie it, so that we can create a single customer record, which will then serve the next purpose of this process, which is a unified customer exp- experience, and Michael's going to talk a little bit about that.
So we think about that frictionless transaction. When you're going to Amazon, you log in. When you buy a TV, you purchase a TV, but you can also purchase groceries. If you interact under one cart, if you come to the city, as Rick just explained, there, you might have four logins to four separate systems. So what we're looking at here is our standard city webpage, but if you notice in the top right-hand corner, there's a login button now. Completely optional, again, we put the power of all of our technology into the users or the constituents' hands to decide if they want to use it or not. It's really their ability to use it. So they log in, they can choose to create an account with their own email, like you would get from a standard computer system, or they could use one of their social media accounts to interface and have one account. So just like any of the private services you see, we're adopting that same methodology and making it as easy as possible for the citizen to interact with the city.
Can I stop you right there for a minute, Mike? Do you want us all to do that, then? Sign up and have our own accounts on, on the city's system? I mean, would that be a good thing for us as council members to do as soon as we can?
Well, not, it's, this, this is not quite live yet. This is what's being built. It's an extremely complex process to build all of this. We are about six to eight months out before this will launch. But I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get towards the next part of the.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Presentation.
I'm just excited to go home and little sign on.
Well, you're going to get real excited, because here's the next step to this. Once you're headed and registered with us, if you so choose to do so, we talked about using your social media accounts and engaging through that account. The next step in that is customizing the web experience for you. So when you go to Amazon and you constantly buy, we'll say, a TV, when you log in next time, what are the deals that you see at the top of Amazon's webpage? TVs, electronics, things that you've purchased before? What we're doing here is we're creating a customized view for the citizen. So if we look here, Michael Williams again, he's created these tiles that you see, permits, business licensing, recreation, and news and announcements. Those are completely customizable by Michael Williams to decide how he wants to interact with government. Again, the power is in his complete hands. As Councilmember Coffin asked, well, what about my, how do, what does constituent know that I'm his council representative? In this case, we have Mayor Protem, yourself. This individual, Michael S. Williams, lives in your area, he has the option, he knows who you are, he has a nice picture of you. Down below is a subscribe to the newsletter, if the council member wants to do a newsletter, to the people that are in, registered with our, with an account, and want to target and provide information, they can do so by slucking that button. Again, the power is in the citizen's hands to decide how they want, how much or how little they want to interact with government. Down on the right-hand side, just like you would see in any type of commercial website, these are the most popular things that citizens are subscribing to or interacting with government. So we have safe key, parks and facilities, check a permit, status, pay a parking ticket. And so again, it's, it's building a customized experience.
Okay, Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. And it knows that Michael is in Ward Six, because Michael, as part of his registration process with his website, has entered his address.
That's correct.
That'd be correct. So, again, furthering, just like you can with any commercial service, again, we have Michael Williams here. He can decide how he wants to interact, or how he wants the government to interact with him. He can choose to have email notifications, he can say yes or no. He can choose to get a text message notification, almost like you do with your banking and financial institutions. You make a withdrawal over twenty dollars, let me know.
Let me stop you right there a little quick. On the SMS notifications, is that something we key into our emergency announcement-type system? In case there was an emergency, the city-wide? I'm just asking that. Has that been part of the thought process?
Yeah, it can be, absolutely.
It certainly could be, right?
Yeah, once we, this is the key. What I described before is that, once we create the identity and we propagate that identity into the underlying systems, that could be just one more application.
So as we go forward and we look at the different types of expiration, so currently now, if you want to be notified when your license, before it expires, you have the expiration notification here, it would tell you. Down the road, we could use the edit function, you could say, remind me thirty days prior to, sixty days, ninety days. Whatever you so choose, how, again, it's how you want to interact with government, or how you want government to interact with you. Due date notifications, same thing. I'd like to know, you know, if I don't pay my sewer bill, tell me five days before, so I can make sure that I pay for it. Notify me, and that's sort of the thought process there. On the right-hand side in this, and this is again a mock-up of what we believe it will look like, and obviously, this is still in the development stage, things that interest me maybe, that I want to know more about. So let's say I have a son that plays a lot of soccer, and when there's children's activities, I can edit this, and I could choose soccer. When new programs are offered that relate to what I want, soccer, notify me. So I'm interested in that. So you're sort of building, like you talked about the emergency management capabilities, that's one factor, or one silo. It could also be a range of services that citizens want to partake in. I'd like to know when we're doing activities at a certain park, please let me know, I'd like to be included. Outdoor events, my council representatives, whenever my council representative's doing something near me or in my ward, I'd like to know. So they can go ahead and, under the edit, there would be the opportunity to sort of select their interaction. And this is something that, you know, we're saying in this, in this next year. These are the type of things that we'll be going ahead and putting out. Again, Las Vegas probably propelling itself to a farther level than what any other type of local municipality is doing in this type of area. Very forefront, um, very advanced. To take it farther, based on your phone, we've talked about the Alexa, it's only one avenue. Again, it's about allowing the power to the individual. How do they, maybe they don't want to use an Alexa app, maybe they want to use their phone. So the same per thing with the phone, the application would be is that, when I'm in an area, maybe about a park that I've said I want to know about, the information's already available to me when I log in. Again, custom experience on my phone, it knows that I'm Michael Williams, it knows I'm going to a park, it can tell me the amenities. There's endless possibilities, so I'm going to give you some far-reaching futuristic things, not on the drawing books, other than in our minds in IT and how we might use this technology. But the ability to have your phone, you can make payments with your phone today. What about reserving a parking space online? You could do it online, you would take your phone, put it up to the meter, instant, it would know it was you, and go ahead and pay. You could do, reserve a room, or reserve a tennis court, and have that type of capability to go up there, put your phone there, it knows it's you, it knows that's the reservation, and go ahead and does that. Again, these are types of services that are automated, that are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's really about efficiency and making, again, the most important thing that I can do in technology is to make the end-user experience as pleasing and as efficient as possible. And that's really what the technology piece is here for.
And before I get into talking a little bit about where we are, and how far we have come, and, and where we are going with all of this, I want to give, uh, credit to, uh, the hard work of the city staff, not just from IT and the project team, but also the departments at the, in our, you know, DSC that have been able to spearhead and get this platform built so that it can grow. So, uh, thanks goes out to the building department, as well as the fire prevention, who are involved in the first phase of this Project Eddie. And the second phase is planning, licensing, and public works at the, in our DSC. So we are building this on a platform, but we're going to incrementally add these functions, because we have to face this effort, otherwise we would never get done. So, what is going to be finished with this Project Eddie is this citizen identity management function. But this is not initially going to be for the DSC only, but will scale outwards. I'll talk a little bit more about that. The integration of all the development departments will be part of this Project Eddie. And the open architecture that we spoke about, future-proofing for new devices, is also part of this framework. We foresaw that these things will come along, and we will have to adapt. So we built it in a way that we can build upon the fu- future as well. So this effort today is fifty-five percent complete. Most of the fire prevention functions have been put onto a new system, and building and safety is going live in the first quarter of next year. Following on the coattails of that is going to be this identity man, uh, you know, management launch, at which time you can go home and create your accounts and do all of that. So that we're expecting around the middle of, uh, twenty seventeen, after which, we will be ready to scale this out towards this entire city. So then we will extend the capable, capabilities of these city logins to go into other non-development departments, like park, like parks and recreation. And then, building on this platform, we have all the scalability we need, we are not confined by size. Of course, we will probably initiate another project to, to build all of this out. And, uh, we'll start doing the personalized interaction. The platform for this entire thing is going to be ready in twenty seventeen. Again, we are forging way ahead of most cities, even cities that have a lot more resources than, than we do. The problem with large cities is that they are very, uh, decentralized in their IT. We have the benefit that we are still centralized and can, can control all of this from a centralized approach, because you cannot have citizen identity management if you do not have centralized control. And finally, moving on beyond the city functions, imagine this as being an ecosystem of digital nature. So, we are looking about sharing inch, information with other agencies instantly. So looking at the cities here in the valley, the, uh, utilities that we deal with, and, uh, as well as for emergency management, like you mentioned, all of this will become seamless and real-time. Uh, so beyond open data, we're talking about open platforms here. And what this means is finally integrating the pri- private sector as well. Imagine that somebody goes to Home Depot and purchase a, purchases a water heater. He needs to apply for a permit. We will ultimately have the capability to embed that permit process in his checkout of that water heater. There will be absolutely no need to go to a device like that, or to your cell phone, or do anything. In fact, we have, uh, begun work with Home Depot to discuss things like this. But this will also become possible ultimately, because if you think about government, government is not an end in itself. We are here to serve the functions of the private sector. And so why not embed our transactions into the larger processes that we enable in the pri- private sector?
So then how would you schedule your inspection, then? Would it just be an automatic, I'm scheduling inspection the next day type thing?
Yes, some, some of that has to be thought through, but we will probably be able to push that in, information to the users through their devices, whether it be a cell phone, email, SMS, all of these capa- capabilities. So, I'm not saying that all of this is ready today, but a lot of this is the vision of where we're going with all of this.
But I see it now, I'll get a notification, once I purchase that water heater at Homes or Lo- at Lowe's or Home Depot, I'm already paying for the permit fee at the store, right? I'll get a notification as to when I'd like an ex, an, an inspection on my phone.
Absolutely. And by, by the time, in, in the next two or three years, this is going to evolve a lot farther. AI is making huge leaps. You know, questions like, uh, Councilman Coffin had about what can I interact with? These are problems today, but by the next year or the year after, they will be solved, where you can use fluid English language with, to talk to your, your devices. So, um, finally, the whole goal of all of this is to make Las Vegas for technology companies to move down here and work with us. So, the goal that we are trying to proceed with is this high-tech to high-touch, because I think Michael and I both have this vision that we feel, uh, technology for delivering citizen services, for delivering customer service, is the right way to go.
You know, that kind of looks like the Terminator's hand there, and this makes me think of Skynet, if you recall that.
It's a friendly hand.
Yeah, it's a friendly hand.
All right, is that it?
That's, yeah.
No more Alexa tricks for us?
I, we can try one.
I know what that red ring means, by the way.
We'll try the, we will try the, uh, so that's maybe an easy, we'll try Ed Fountain Park again. Alexa, ask my Vegas about Ed, Alexa, ask my Vegas about Ed Fountain Park. Let's try, we'll try something else here, one more last. Alexa, ask my Vegas, how do I contact Public Works?
To reach Public Works, please call seven zero two, two two nine, six two seven six.
We could also, yeah, you just some things we could also, if you want to know about the mayor, so we could ask. Alexa, ask my Vegas to tell me about the mayor of Las Vegas.
The mayor of Las Vegas is Carolyn Goodman, winning sixty percent of the vote. She became the mayor of the city of Las Vegas in two thousand and eleven.
So there's different types of interactions, I mean, we could ask it for, um, Alexa, ask my Vegas for parks with baseball. Might be along with this.
Las Vegas City Parks with baseball fields are Children's Memorial Park, Doc Romeo Park, Gary Dexter Park, Gary Reese Freedom Park, Hadlin Park, Kianga Island, Colosseum.
So you could stop, it might go on, I'm not sure how many have parks. But we've basically built all the parks now are encapsulated in this technology. So you could ask it restrooms, barbecues, whatever you want, that we have a, a category for, and we have those type of interactions built in. And that, we look at submitting the park component, um, as well as all the council meetings for twenty seventeen that have already been laid out. So you could ask Alexa for the meetings in, um.
I don't see a calendar set up. To link your calendar, go to the settings page in your Alexa app.
So, um, you'll be able to ask it for meetings in June, and it would tell you that. So we're building those interactions in, but I would say in the next two to three weeks, you'll see the next set. If you have one of these devices and you've downloaded our skills, you'll have all the park information, all the contact information, um, built into it. Elected officials are already in the system now, um, and we have a couple of other little things we've added into it.
Is there any other city in the United States that has gotten this far as we have with technology?
There is no other city at this point that's built as much as we've built this. Uh, Utah, state of Utah did a DMV application where you could ask it questions about stopping and for practice exam for your, uh, but as far as cities that have gone this far, we're the farthest currently. We're also one of the first cities, one of, I think, two or three, that have the Newsflash, um, built in as well. And we've, ours are submitted, and actually, in the store, in a fledgling state. But this next wave that you're going to see in the next two to three weeks, as fast as Amazon will, will post it up for us, will really take us, catapult us, I believe, to, if there's a ranking, and I'll go on the record as saying, we'll be number one as far as municipalities go, as far as the information that we're putting out there.
Councilman Beers?
As you add new capabilities to this skill, which is Amazon's name for what we've been calling an app, does it happen, do I get that added functionality automatically, having already downloaded it once? Or do you have to, do I have to do it again? Or, and I guess the companion question is, how do I know that you've got something new?
That's going to be one challenge. As far as you having to do anything, there's nothing you need to do, it's automatically there, new functionality will come up. We're going to have the challenges, we don't necessarily know you specifically yet, since we don't have our identity management piece rolled into the application. We won't be able to push out new information to let you know. But we're hoping through PIO's office and through other channels, that we're going to be able to get that information out there and get a base of people throughout the city excited about the technology, and excited about the things that we can do with this, that will really make their, again, put power in their hands, and really make their lives easier.
All right, let's adjourn. Let's adjourn.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Councilwoman, please.
I probably use the, uh, technology less than anybody here on the council. You have Suri or what, on the iPhone, right? And you ask her, yes, Suri?
Siri.
How to spell it, please?
S-I-R-I.
Siri, on the, uh, so anyway, you ask her questions, and she answers. What you've done here, then, is you've taken it so that you have, it's not Siri, it's someone else, obviously, Alexa, who is, um, answering questions, and these questions are focused on just the city. Am I right?
That is correct.
Okay, now, that, Bob, when you use this at home, you use it for the city and other things? It's just that they've added that part onto it?
The basic framework of the Alexa machine, uh, the Echo, has been released to the public, and the whole world's computer community has been invited to create stuff that make Alexa do more things. And that's exactly what City IT has done.
I see, so, and then you've just added two, so you also not only get just here in the city, which I know we are advanced in what we're trying to do, but you get anyplace else in the world, too? too?
Sure. You can download, I don't know how many thousands of skills are out there for Alexa today, but I'm sure that it's in excess of a thousand, and ranging from Play 20 questions to, I mean, they're just all over the map.
I see.
Some are fun and frivolous, and some are deadly serious, like my shopping list.
Can you change, I'm sorry, can you change?
Let me just, I'll just, I'll get off the line. I just wanted to say thank you very much for someone who is not really up on all of this. It's interesting, I push it all the time in the schools, even when I was on the school board, and I was even less, less afford then, but I have not been able, and I don't know if it's because of age factors or what, been able to do this as well, but I'm going, I'm trying, and I've got to the iPhone stage, and now I get to that, and now you've got Alexa. But anyway, thank you so much, it was very interesting.
You're most welcome. And this is going to get closer to you as you, as you can see. It used to take a lot to take out your phone and do a transaction. It's already much easier when you can tell a device to pay your sewer bill or tell you, you know, to look things up.
Right.
You can see how much faster it is and how much more user-friendly it is going to be.
And I'd probably make less mistakes, I would think, if I'm not pushing the buttons, yeah. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome, thank you.
Question, Mayor Protem.
Please, Councilman Beers, I mean, Councilman Coffin?
Why did we select this versus Google, which has, you know, the database of so many, many questions, billions of questions asked? Why wouldn't we use that?
We selected the Amazon Alexa because Amazon allows what they call an API, a program interface. They've allowed it open to the public to access and use. The Google Home unit, which we do have, we're already making sure that we're ahead of the curve, doesn't have all the same tools and development features built in. So, this was the only unit that's on the market currently that has a interface that allows us to actually interact with. Additionally, we're working on this same technology, while for the citizenry, we're going to flip it around and use it internally. So, department managers and directors could ask, how much vacation does X employee have available? What is my budget currently? What is the status on POX? So, that program set is not only, we're trying to use commercial, so sort of the philosophy in IT currently, is use off-the-shelf commercial technology to be able to rapidly bring efficiency and solutions to the city as a whole. So, we're using that same technology in two different directions. But currently, they're the only ones that really have an open interface that allows us, they actually encourage you to build for it.
Can you call it another name? Do you have to always use Alexa?
It has three names currently. You can call it Amazon, you can call it Alexa, or you can call it Echo.
Can't call it honey?
You may not.
Not, not yet.
Not currently. Current technology, no.
Okay, all right. Just my age.
Soon, Councilman Coffin, soon. Yes, Councilman Beers?
Just a quick comment. I think you may be able to confirm for me that Alexa was on the market for like six months before Google released their device?
Yes, just.
And that's like 75 years.
More than two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
Two years?
Two years.
So, that's like 150 years in human years.
Yeah, it's.
Two tech years, it's 150 human years.
Wow, okay.
And I'm sure Siri will be on the list very soon too, to catch up.
There are rumors that Apple is building an equivalent device to.
So, you can use your phone.
So, you could use the SIRI toolset to build to it.
Well, certainly, technology is advancing as quickly as it is. It's an amazing thing to see, and it's exciting for the city of Las Vegas to be in this position. So, congratulations to you guys, great presentation. I know if there's, and to answer Councilman Beers' question about getting information out there, Director Riggleman and his team do a great job, whether it's on our website or whether it's through social media, and you would, you guys already know how many people follow us on all of those levels. So, it's going to be easy to get the data and information out there when something new comes along. So, thank you very much. I don't think a motion is necessary. It is not?
Just received.
Don't need a motion? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
I've been requested by staff to come, go to Agenda Item 65, as we've got some staff members who have some other commitments this afternoon. So, I know Vanetta was next on the list, so hope she's not disappointed. I'll read this item into the record. This is Agenda Item 65, it is DIR 67582. This is a public hearing, the applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, discussion for possible action on a presentation regarding the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor Plan, and provide direction to staff on matters related there too. This affects Wards 4 and 6, Councilman Anthony and myself. And I will turn the time over to Robert, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, good afternoon. I'm going to be very.
State your full name for the record.
I'm sorry, thank you. Robert Summerfield with the city's Department of Planning.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I'm going to be real quick, because I know you guys have other things, and I appreciate Vanetta's willingness to allow me to come forward a little sooner. This morning, or this afternoon now, I wanted to give a quick update on a study that we've been working on with the community in the Rainbow Boulevard area. This study has been being worked on between Clark County 215 and Rancho on that section of Rainbow Boulevard. This is a section that's currently designated as a primary arterial road, and one of the reasons that's important is because we've seen quite a bit of development pressure in that area, in part because Rainbow is currently listed as an arterial road. And so, that's one of the reasons why this study has been conducted and why this plan is moving forward. We've held a number of meetings with the community, with the neighborhood. The first meeting was held back in April. We began meeting with them, hearing their concerns based on some applications that had already gone through in the Rainbow Corridor area. And based on the feedback that we received from that meeting, we drafted a study on what the implications for some of the changing development patterns along the Rainbow Boulevard were. We then went out to the community with a second meeting this summer in July, and we also put out a survey. We wanted to get some feedback, not just from folks who were able to attend the neighborhood meeting, but also from the larger area about some of the things that were happening and could potentially continue to happen along the corridor. That resulted in a draft document that was circulated, based on some initial comments from that draft. A second draft was put together. And then, most recently, we took that draft and some additional information out to the community in a neighborhood meeting that was done just last week. And I want to thank staff from both Wards 4 and Ward 6, who attended with planning staff in conducting that meeting and hearing from the community and the neighbors. Finally, we're at today's presentation to the city council, just so that you get a quick update on where we're at, on the status of this process. Next week, we will be presenting the draft plan itself to the Planning Commission for their recommendation, and then we expect to be back in January. I apologize, I don't have, if it's the first meeting or the second meeting in January, but we anticipate a resolution to come forward in January that will adopt a policy guidance for this stretch of Rainbow in that corridor. In the survey that we went out, we got actually about 80, 80-some responses to the survey. We did curate that a little bit based on some zip code data that we asked for in the survey, because we really did, while we wanted to hear everyone who took the time to respond's opinion about the change along the corridor, we really did want to emphasize and pay particular attention to the opinions of those that were within the, within the area of change. And so, there were about 15 respondents to the survey that were within that zip code range. And as you can see here, most of them feel that the neighborhood is changing, that that rural character that has traditionally existed there is, is maybe moving away. However, as you will see in the, on the right side of the screen, most of the, the community and the members that responded to this survey, that ruralness or that quietness, that, that lower-key community, neighborhood, are the things that they value about the neighborhood that they live in. And so, we have to balance that, the fact that there are some changes occurring along the corridor, with maintaining the, the community and the neighborhood that exists there. So, a few of the things that have been in the discussion that planning staff has been working with the community on is the, is that balance. How do we balance the, the needs of the community with the, the development pressure that exists? As you all know, there are a number of large vacant lots along Rainbow. The likelihood of those becoming new single-family ranch homes is probably relatively small. So, what can we do from some policy guidance to help alleviate some of the concerns of the community while providing some direction to developers who want to maybe invest in that area? And so, some of the, the questions that we, or some of the responses we got on the, that given some of the recent approvals, what would be some of those commercial activities that would be found to be compatible with the, the neighbors? And so, some of the things that came up were restaurants without drive-throughs. So, again, not driving new automotive traffic, but local serving restaurants, or small shops, or even maybe a small-scale grocery store in that area, again, that's more local serving and not necessarily driving new traffic to the Rainbow Corridor. And one of the, oh, I'll get to that in the next slide. And that becomes important on a slide that I'm going to get to in a minute, because there is a very big difference between how Rainbow is listed as a primary arterial and how it's currently used today. Some of the other aspects of this survey, we asked about folks' feelings about traffic safety, and these three graphs are all about the segment between Rancho and Anne Road. Anne Road is the significant intersection along this corridor. In fact, Anne Road carries the lion's share of the traffic through this area. This stretch of Rainbow is actually pretty local-serving. Most, about a third of the people who use this section of Rainbow are actually using it to access Anne Road. And then, most of the travel is east and west on Anne. So, you know, one of the questions that we asked was, how do you feel about traffic safety? And how do you feel about walking safety? And as, as you can see here, the highest concern is about vehicle speeds. This road has been planned out and to some degree built out, although it's not striped for it as a high-capacity arterial road. And so, one of the things that the plan will discuss and is in the study, is what are some interventions that we can do to kind of slow speeds down and make that street feel more like a neighborhood street or a local collector's street? On this slide here, you see what I was talking about, and I, hopefully, you can read it on the slides or the presentation that you received in briefings yesterday. But as I mentioned, only about a third of the traffic that it accesses Rainbow, which is a relatively low number of cars, particularly for a primary arterial, actually goes north and south on Rainbow. A lot of it is accessing Anne to access the freeways, to access other areas of the northwest. So, there's been some recent land use entitlements in this area. This helps with the need for this conversation about what are some different policy directions and some options we can give the community. You know, there's the Walgreens, I believe it's the Walgreens, at the northwest corner of Anne and Rainbow. There's been some additional recent requests and approvals at the other intersections there. And then, we also have at the south end of this corridor, we have the CarMax. And so, the CarMax site is, you know, it accesses off of Rancho, so its impact on the Rainbow side of it is minimal, but it's technically in that corridor, so we talk about that. This area is in somewhat transition, and so that makes it ripe for this conversation and, and a policy plan that will help kind of, again, deal with some of the commercial intrusion into what has traditionally been a residential neighborhood. And so, we see rural residential area becoming some service commercial at the major intersection. We see some of the rural residential still existing. We do still have some very large lot homes that are being operated as homes along Rainbow, particularly north of Anne. And then, we have some other smaller-scale commercial development occurring in the corridor. We do have, similar to some of these pictures here, although I do need to be, in all fairness, these are not pictures of the, the Rainbow Corridor, these are just example photos of some of the, the stuff that we want to ensure doesn't continue to creep into this area where we get more auto-oriented development. Again, we want more neighborhood-serving, walkable types of, of development. Additionally, one of the conversations, and one of the more productive conversations we've had with the community, is an understanding that there will be some level of development in this corridor, and there are properties that currently have the ability for multifamily. One of the things that the plan does is discuss, you know, what are the shapes that that multifamily takes? It doesn't have to be multi-story apartments. It can be townhomes, it can be duplexes. There can be creative design elements put in place that will allow multifamily at a, at a form or at a density or intensity that it remains compatible with the larger community in this area. And so, that's, again, another element that we're exploring. Again, townhomes, again, two-story, keeping them feeling very single-family-ish, but with a little tighter design at the street. So, again, it's not feeling as impactful to the neighborhoods and the communities that are a little off of Rainbow. As I mentioned, Rainbow is, currently, it's a primary arterial, although I haven't even spoken with, with Public Works, and we need to continue that dialogue. Maybe that section of Rainbow no longer needs to be designated as a primary arterial. We need to look at those traffic numbers. When it was originally designated, it was expected that it would go over the 215. I mean, we're talking years and years and years ago when that designation. We know based on the development patterns that have occurred that the likelihood of an interchange or it going over the 215 at the northern end are unlikely. So, it doesn't need to carry the amount of traffic that it was originally conceptualized as.
Mr. Summerfield, can I stop you there?
Certainly, sir.
Very, very unlikely are not the right words. Never ever going to happen would be the key, key words. Rainbow will not cross over the 215 and into that ranchland area, certainly not in our lifetimes, I don't believe. So, I mean, it's up to what happens in the next 20 to 50 years with that land, but I honestly don't think that's ever going to happen in our lifetime. So, I just want to make that abundantly clear on the record, Your Honor, and councilmembers.
We have another come in too, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm very glad you made that strongly, because yesterday I, I asked about some calls that I had had, that they are telling me that we're going to go through, make Rainbow go all the way through. And I told the last caller, I said, I, I know nothing about this, and I haven't heard anything with Councilwoman Ross doing anything, but they were convinced that we were going to go all the way down on Rainbow and cause problems. So, wherever that is, from, from wherever that is emanating, I would like to reemphasize with all the top people here in the city with whom I've checked, that that is not happening. He says it's never happening, I don't know about never yet, but in any case, whoever is telling other individuals that the city is planning to take Rainbow straight through and it will ruin their real rural atmosphere, that's not true. And I will make calls to those individuals personally before the end of the week.
With the mayor's permission, Councilwoman, I'd like to say, they have been misinformed once again of what the city's intentions are, and it seems to be an ongoing thing these days. Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
So, so again, to the Mayor Protem's point, it will never carry the traffic that it was originally conceptualized when it was designated a primary arterial. So, one of the things that we've talked with the community about is testing out different strategies for narrowing essentially that street, making it a more, for lack of a better term, intimate kind of setting, so that it doesn't feel as wide open, you don't get the speeding traffic. It feels more inviting for, for folks to maybe walk to one of these new commercial destinations that hopefully will be neighborhood-serving. And so, there's a bunch of different strategies that we can do to look for what the best option is, and we look forward to continuing to have that dialogue with the community, as well as our Public Works Department on some of those complete street ideas. And with that, like I said, the, the, this was the study, this is just to bring you up to speed on what we've been doing for the last eight months or so on this. We expect to actually have a policy guide for you to adopt by resolution in January. And we'll be taking that to Planning Commission, actually, for their discussion next week. It is still in draft right now, I do also want to make sure that that's clear. We're incorporating the comments. We had 30, almost 40 people at the neighborhood meeting last Thursday. Staff was there for three hours, having conversations with the community. This is a very passionate neighborhood, and it includes residents not just in the city, but also the county. There is a stretch of Rainbow in this area that is in the county jurisdiction, and we're trying to be very mindful of, of that and have that larger conversation as a community.
I would highly suggest that as the meetings take place, you know, in those county islands, they receive notification.
Right.
Of the meetings being held.
of the meetings being held, in specifically every mailbox, if they still remain or however they're set up, because I think a lot of the misinformation and stirring of issues and creating issues comes from the fact that they've heard rumor, and they're, it's just rumor-mongering in order to bring the festering to the islands. So, I know Councilman Anthony had a comment or question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, the reason this whole thing started is because I was getting folks contacting me and asking me, well, what's going on on Rainbow? And can I do this on this property? Can I do that on this property? And this was south of Anne Road on Rainbow, and I talked to Mayor Protem Ross about doing this study. So, I appreciate you doing this, because this is going to be very helpful, because that is kind of a funky area. It's not sure what it wants to be yet. So, but this is very, very helpful, and I appreciate you doing it. One question I had, though, I wasn't at the meeting where there was about 40 people there, so when you're talking to the folks that live around there, is there some kind of consensus on what they would like Rainbow to look like? Or are they all over the place? And is that, was that, was that in the presentation? I wasn't sure if I saw that or not.
I don't believe that summary was in the presentation, but essentially, there's some consensus around the understanding that there will be redevelopment along the corridor, that there are a number of vacant properties that will not likely be ranch-style, single-family homes. There is continuing to be some discussion about exactly what that means. Again, that goes back to those survey results, where it seems that there is a number of people in that area who acknowledge that there will be some commercial development, there will be some multifamily, but exactly what does the shape of that look like? And how can we help the development community deliver that in such a way that it is context-sensitive to that community and to that neighborhood, where folks feel like they still have that rural or non-urban lifestyle, but also have some of those amenities that come with being in a city and in and adjacent to an urban environment? And so, that's the direction that we're going. I think the term one of my staff members used is that Americana feel, that kind of almost Main Street-y feel, where, you know, we're talking one, two-story buildings, and there's walkability, but it's not overly intense, overly built up. And again, folks can still feel like it's a quiet neighborhood and a quiet community, and they don't have a bunch of people. It's not destination shopping, and folks happen to drive into their quiet neighborhood and disrupting their quality of life.
So, are there any more public meetings, or this goes right to the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission will be a public hearing.
Okay.
So, that will be a public meeting, and then, obviously, when it comes to City Council, that's a resolution. I don't believe it's consent, so that would be available for, at the discretion of the council, to open that for a public meeting as well.
Okay. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, one question, Mayor.
Wait, we have comments down there? Councilman Coffin?
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Is there such a thing?
And we have public comment, too.
Is there such a thing as a country road? I mean, think about it. You know, we're not county, and so we have to think urban, semi-urban, but when you say a word like "country road," is that a term of art that does have a definition? Or is it like what it feels to you, and maybe I feel a little different?
Through you, Mayor. Councilman, I think it's that latter. It's more of an art. It's more of a literary feel. The presentation that we missed at the workshop yesterday, which thank you all for attending and participating in that, that was very, very successful, was a presentation on non-urban streetscape standards. So, that's that country road kind of thing. And so, we will be having that at a January City Council meeting, where we will be discussing that exact topic. What does it mean for that country road, if you would, in the city of Las Vegas? And so, that is a very topical discussion, and one we didn't get to during the workshop, but we will be bringing before you in January.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who would wish to come up and comment, please. And Mr. Perrigo, Mr. Summerfield, if you'll respond, unless it's from us that the responses do.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hello, Mr. Mayor Protem and Councilman Anthony.
Your name is?
Jim Epley. I'm a homeowner in the area. I own two homes in the Rainbow Corridor. One is on Torrey Pines Estates at Rainbow and Azure, so at the far north end of the 215 that's never going to go through. And the other one is Rainbow and Anne Road. So, I'm right, I'm one of those 15 that are right in that area. We have a Rainbow-facing property that I used to live in. I moved out of it because traffic did get a little bit heavy. It just wasn't conducive for my family to live there anymore. We've been using it as a rental property, but it's hard for me to actually keep tenants in there, just because, again, it's right there on Rainbow, and I can't really get a good family in there. People do want to come in there with different businesses. I've had trucking companies approach me, and I can't do that. It's part of the Rainbow Garden subdivision as well. We're on a community well there. So, I'm very affected by this. I do want to acknowledge the city for putting this thought into this plan. I was at the meeting with the 40, 30, 40 people the other day, last week, and the plan has some good things. The walkability is really good. The Americana feel really stands out to me, you know, maybe putting an island in the middle of the road and developing it somewhat commercial, somewhat residential. But the old homes that are there are just not, it's not rural in nature anymore. They were built in the '70s, and it's just changed. I mean, since I've been there, the Walgreens went in, the Kinder Prep Academy went in, we had the RPD-8 developing, going right across the street. There is walkability. That RPD-8 that went in across the street actually has a section that's made for walkability out onto Rainbow. So, I want to say that north of Anne Road is set up for walkability. I believe that should be looked at for future commercial development, just as the gentleman was talking about, as far as the small grocery stores, restaurants. I don't want to limit that to just the south, because half of the residents in this area are on the north side of it. So, limiting the development, commercial development to the south is going to limit the walkability of those residents on the north side of Anne Road as well. So, I just really wanted to thank the city for putting the time into it. Thanks for bringing this up, Councilman Anthony. And I, right there on Rainbow, forward-facing property, and I don't know what to do with my property if I'm, if I can't do something with my property as well in that area and the neighbors. So, and again, I live at the north end of the area. I think something walkable for the neighbors would be great, you know, restaurants, grocery stores, something that's not the auto-oriented, as you call it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any comments on that? Anyone else wishing to be heard on this agenda item, please? I'm going to close the public hearing, then. And is there a motion?
Yeah, there is, if I can make a couple of comments
Please.
with your permission, Your Honor, and through you. Sir, I appreciate your comments. I've got to tell you this, and I want to give staff a little bit of direction. The sensitive area is north of Anne Road, and Councilman Anthony and I both agree on that. I have a great concern about letting anything else go commercial beyond that corner that we already have. Ms. Fretwell, you and I had this discussion with Mr. Perrigo, squeezing that corridor down, putting some enhancements in that area. I'm getting reports of drag racing going down on and off, on occasion, because it's a dead end and it's wide open. It's a fairly wide road right there. I know it's unapproved, I think, pretty much on both sides. I'd have to go look at it again. But we need to, in your plan, Mr. Summerfield, you need to figure something out to make that a less attractive place for me to want to race my car. Does that make sense? And you want it to be walkable. We've still got a lot of people in the county island that live right behind that, that still have horses, that still want to ride. I want that to kind of be in your mind as well. And he's right about walkability and getting the businesses and all that sort of thing, but I'm really going to be hard-pressed for any of those other parcels. So, please come up with an idea. I liked some of the examples you used, the duplexes, the two-story, the condo-type feel that enhances those properties. He obviously has property on that corridor, can't keep tenants in it. What's, what can he do with it? Well, I don't want it to be an Applebee's. I don't want it to be another grocery store. There's an Albersons around the corner. That's what I don't want to see in that area. It needs to stay residential in nature, in my opinion. Certainly, we can't tell an applicant no, but they can go through the application process as we always do in the city of Las Vegas, but we've got to do something to make that area just done. Figure it out, enhance his property values, the other, his neighbors as well, and what they can do with it, and we'll go from there. So, I'd like to see that in there. Who ran the neighborhood meeting, by the way?
Through you, Mayor. That was Michael Howell. He's the senior planner in Long Range. He's here with us today. He, him and our newest planner, one, they did that.
Okay, Michael, I got to tell you something. My staff was there, and they said you ran an absolutely fabulous meeting. It's important that we hear our residents, and I got nothing but accolades and how professionally and courteously you ran that meeting. So, I just want to express my appreciation to you for doing that. It's tough when you get in some of those meetings. I've been there. I've been yelled at a lot, and I'm probably going to yell that again before I'm done. But I want to express my appreciation to you and my staff as well for the good job you did.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'd really like to give my appreciation to the neighbors. It's wonderful for planners to actually have a good turnout and to take that energy and focus it into good planning.
Have you not been out in Ward 6 lately?
Yes. The first meeting was fun, and then it got progressively more constructive.
Interesting. Well, good. I hope it was a good experience, but there's a lot of passionate people out there who care a great deal about their rural lifestyles. I've been very, worked very hard to protect those rural lifestyles, but here's just one of those, I think Councilman Anthony said it's kind of a funky area right there, you know? What do we do with it to make it attractive for someone to live there or someone to do something there? We've let the two corners, well, three corners now, go C1 commercial. And, I mean, we've got to be cognizant of that. I'm not sure we want to see any of that creeping north, headed towards the Beltway. So, we've got to figure something else out and make that a good balance. So, those are my comments, Your Honor. Since we closed the public hearing, I would make a motion to accept the report, I guess. Is there anything else, Mr. Perrigo? Is that it?
Okay, there's a motion.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Please vote, and please post. That motion carries. And so, now we're back to 47. Report by Vanetta Appleyard, Director of Finance and Discussion for Possible Action, Regarding the Review of the Financial Forecast Model for the City of Las Vegas, Reference to All Wards.
Good afternoon, Vanetta Appleyard, Director of Finance. The purpose of this report is to update you on the financial performance of the city. We're going to review how we are finishing fiscal year FY '16. We are going to update the financial forecast for FY '17 and provide you a preliminary forecast on FY '18 as we start our budget process. As you may recall, we have a financial oversight committee that we convene when we start the budget process. This committee is comprised of several citizens that are representing real estate, government, gaming, financial advisory, and banking professionals, and they provide their expertise and observation as it relates to financial performance in their areas, and we have a really good discussion. Those discussions are invaluable to us as we, as it helps us identify our sources of revenue, as well as we kind of start looking at our expenditures. On the financial forecast side, we looked at our C-Tax. C-Tax is a major revenue in the general fund. It represents 52% of our general fund revenues, and C-Tax always provides a lively discussion as it has so many drivers that are beneficial to this, to this revenue source. Of those, population, employment growth or job growth were discussed, the wage growth and visitor volume. And in all of those areas, as we discussed it, the range of the growth was from 1% to 3%. So, as we went through the discussion, they advised us going forward that we should use, we had budgeted 3.2% in FY '17. They advised us to use a 3.5% growth rate, and they also said we should use that in our forecast. Again, this is the preliminary number. It's the beginning, so we will be revising those numbers. But one thing we wanted to remind you is, last year, we had budgeted 5% in C-Tax, and when the financial advisory committee came in, we actually lowered that to 4% based on the discussions that we had.
Mayor?
Yes, please. Councilman Barlow.
When you say they, is this the financial committee?
The financial advisory group.
Okay.
Along with staff.
So, opposed to five, what we've done in the past, 5%, they've asked us to lower it to 3.5?
3.5 for FY '17 and FY '18.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll, and again, we'll be adjusting that.
What is that based on?
Again, it was based on, they had population growth. We were seeing, in FY '16, it was 1.6%. So, they said that range would be around 2%. The employment growth or job growth was at the 2.6% range, so they were looking at 2.6% to 3%. Wage growth in the metropolitan area here in Las Vegas, it was around the 1% to 2% range. And visitor volume, in FY '15, ended at 2.9%, and right now, year-to-date, it's at 1.6%. So, they didn't feel that anything was really robust enough to be going gangbusters in the percentage for C-Tax.
Right. And so, the C-Tax for what we budgeted for FY '16, we budgeted it at 5%, but it actually came in 1%
It came in at 4%.
Lower.
Came in lower.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thanks, ma'am. The question I have is just, how far did we differ? Did our panel differ from the panel that completed its first forecast, I think, for the state revenue picture? Didn't they just meet and have a number of some kind? And I know it's a different mix, a different market basket, but still...
We actually haven't received the numbers from the state yet. We start this process ahead of time, so we can start talking to the departments. We'll have that number probably in January, December, January.
No, wait, no, no, no. They had a public meeting, and they announced it. It is required in the first week in December, and then budget is final dealt on that. And then, there's another revision mid-course in like April or something like that. So, I was just curious how conservative or buoyant these forecasts are in comparison to each other.
And I'll have to admit, I did not check what that was, so I have to, I will take a look at that and report that.
Councilman Beers might know more about that, but we have had two, and I don't know if he's on that or not. It apparently, it escaped him.
Councilman Beers? Is that a question to Councilman Beers?
I was kind of paraphrasing.
Your Honor, they met on December 6th.
Oh, just yesterday. And they voted, didn't they?
I haven't seen anything, and there's no minutes available.
Okay. All right. So, they obviously talked about some number and voted on it, but they haven't published. Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll show that report once we see it.
Thank you.
This will just show an illustration of the trend of C-Tax. As you can see, we are, our highest C-Tax ever was in 2006. That's not on the graph, but we are finally back to those levels. And it shows that, once we came out of the recession, C-Tax did trend relatively stable across the years. The bars represent the dollars, and again, the red, the red line represents the percentage growth. In the area of property tax, this represents 18% of our revenues in the general fund. And again, the property tax is based on a calculation that's defined by NRS, and at this time, our budget was relatively flat. I mean, we stayed, I mean, we were relatively within budget from FY '16. The recommendation was, we had budgeted 2%, they recommended the 2.3%, and that's really based on trending with our personal property. And also, in FY '17, we're forecasting 3.5%. Again, that's based on the calculation of the cap, as well as what we see in new growth and in personal property tax growth. This is the abatement cap history that shows what's been happening in that area. The residential and commercial caps, as you know, are defined by IRS, I mean, IRS, NRS, which is, residential is subject to a 3% cap, and commercial is subject to the 8% cap. But the secondary calculation, as we have been discussing, the residential cap cannot be greater than the commercial cap. And the commercial cap is the lower of 8% or the greater of 10-year average AV or two-time CPI. So, the 10-year average CPI, we are estimating it to be at a negative 2.8 at the bottom of that chart, which means we would be looking at the CPI. The CPI we're estimating right now at 1.3, and that means two-time CPI would be 2.8. So, we would be looking at the residential cap and the commercial cap of 2.6 going forward for this. And again, when we add our new growth, we had it at 3.5 in total for property tax growth. This shows the property tax history. As you can see, the dark bar is the collected, the light is the abated. So, as assessed value does grow, that will continue to get bigger, but our collection rate is relatively stable.
Mayor?
Yes, please, Councilman Barlow.
This question is for Betsy. Betsy, if we go back to the previous slide, the, looking at the, at the history, can you speak to what our plans are as it relates to the, going back before the legislature and the various municipalities that we've teamed up with, and I guess all cities, municipalities across this state for that matter in relation to the, the cap that we've been dealing with moving forward?
Sure, I'm happy to, and probably ask Mark to weigh in here in a second. But generally, over the last twelve to eighteen months, we've been working on these issues associated with the property tax statutes and some of the unique qualities associated with the way our statutes are written. Obviously, Vanetta's highlighted an area where something unpredictable happened that I don't think was anticipated in the drafting of the legislation. So we've been working to resolve that, but I think on a more longer-looking view, there's quite a bit of work that probably needs to be done in this property tax category to try and work out some of these areas that maybe are in need of improvement. Certainly clarity going forward. So Mark has been involved in a local government finance consortium of representatives across the state. Over the course of time, working with various financial experts on taxation, including Jeremy Aguero and Applied Analysis Staff. And, and this hasn't just been cities. It's been cities, counties, and school districts. So, it'll probably be helpful to have Mark talk through that a little bit, because we think we have something we've all tentatively agreed to conceptually for short-term, I won't say solution, but approach during the next session, and then a longer-term approach to addressing many of the other property tax formula issues. So, Mark, do you mind giving a little more color and detail on that?
No, I'd be happy to. For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer. Yes, as we briefed on this yesterday, this particular slide that Vanetta has up speaks directly to the unanticipated and likely unintended event where we have both negative AV growth and a very low CPI. And by the way, CPI is just the prior year. It's not a ten-year rolling average like the AV is. But I don't think anybody anticipated that property tax cap, bill caps, in other words, the, the limit to which a tax bill can grow would be less than three percent across the board. And but, and just to be clear, this doesn't mean that everybody's bill is gonna grow by three percent. It means that nobody's bill will grow more than three percent. If you asked anybody this past year, you know, what they thought their tax bill grew by, pretty much everybody would've said three percent, because that's what they thought, including legislators and members of staff at the city, because I personally asked the question when this first popped up. So the immediate problem is this dilemma of, in a year where we were seeing values recover, income levels go up, employment go up, we were seeing absolutely no growth in property tax, and that became a big issue for us in terms of our ability to meet our own needs and fund the needs of some of our partnerships like Metro, for example. I think there is some appetite from the meetings that we've been having to, to sort of fix this particular three percent tax bill cap dilemma. But the, one of the things we've had to do in our, in our meetings, both with legislators and other interested groups like NRA, the Greater Chamber, Nevada Resort Association, the Greater Chamber, and others, is that our tax structure, our tax formula, our, our tax approach is very complicated, more complicated than any other state in the union, and there are some other issues with it that we think need to be addressed. But we, that needs to take some more time, more thought, more, we need to make sure that all the stakeholders are participating. So I, I think there is some appetite to fix this particular problem, but there are other things that I think is gonna, that are gonna have to be studied in the long term to come up with better solution, because there are some other problems with our, our tax structure. Not the least of which is cost versus market value, the depreciation factors, the fact that we allow commercial property a, an appeal process based on income level that, that sets the tax bill low with no, which is a one-way ratchet. There's no way to recover from that with caps like this. There's a whole series of issues that we can need to take a look at, and so there seems to be some appetite to look at that on a long-term basis and deal with it maybe in phases as, as the legislature deems is appropriate. But we're kind of encouraged where we are so far, but we're pushing really hard through December and into early January before the session starts to have a consensus with all the stakeholders and a bill. And I will tell you that AV43, which is a, the bill, an ACO bill, which was crafted from the work that we were doing with our local government financial working group, is a good place to start, and it does address this particular three percent cap problem. So we have something at least out of the gate to, to work with, so.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Through you, Your Honor. I think that the, that group that you guys have been meeting with, I mean, there's a bunch of brilliant minds in that room on one time can figure this thing out for the benefit of the rest of the state, so this doesn't happen again. And when you said our tax code is probably one of the most complicated in the country, why is that, Mr. Vincent? I mean, why, why should it be so complicated? With all the brilliant financial minds in this state, and especially with the municipalities and other organizations, why are we here?
Well, we, we've done a few things.
It's a tough question, I know.
It's probably a rhetorical question, but we have, look, the bill that gave us the, the abatement caps did what it was supposed to do during the, the real estate, you know, bubble. It did exactly what it was supposed to do, and it protected taxpayers from having runaway tax bills. It just, there's a series of secondary calculations on how you get to the tax bill cap, which is what this particular slide that Vanetta is showing you. Most people in, well, and as some of our council members may know, some of these secondary or tertiary calculations, if you will, were added sort of at the last minute, and I don't think a lot of people understood, or, a lot of people didn't have enough time to anticipate what might happen down the road. And of course, this, the Great Recession happened down the road, and it just, these things produce some odd results. But we also have things like depreciation. We're the only state in the nation that depreciates the value of improvements, which, by the way, we don't even value at market. We value at replacement costs using a construction estimating service. So, we do some odd little things that other states don't do, but the concern always is that property tax be a stable, predictable, reliable source. We don't like it when we have aberrations up or down. I mean, we, property tax would like to be a stable revenue source. So, yeah. Now, I remember when the bubble was going on, and we had conversations during our budget process with all due respect, and I actually told some of the legislatures this back in 2005, and that was that, you know, local government is gonna respond to this bubble by reducing property tax rates. Wouldn't it have been wonderful to have been able to reduce our tax rates so we wouldn't be pressing up against the statutory caps, which is what would've been the responsible thing to do? But, but, you know, people didn't trust that all local governments would do the right thing. It's a shame that that's that way, but that's that way. So I think sometimes the way our process works and the fact that we don't have home rule, the fact that the legislature tries to protect our citizens in, in fashion it does, create some odd formulas, and we have to deal with those. But thank goodness we're able to reba, go back and revisit them and fix them when they're broken, and we were able to do that with C-Tax. I'm hopeful that we can do that with the property tax as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next area of revenue is our license and franchise revenues. This is eighteen percent of our general fund budget. As you can see, our budget, we budgeted two point two percent. We came in relatively on budget with this particular item. We did have some downward trending in our utility and gas franchise. We did look in the, there were reductions in rate by Nevada Power, and so they, and they had attributed that to lower fuel costs and total costs. So that, obviously, as they lowered their rate, it impacted our utility, our franchise utility. We see that still happening in FY18, seventeen, so we did adjust it slightly downwards to match that trend.
Question, comment from Councilman Beers, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. And Vanetta, I don't expect that you have the answer at your fingertips, so an email follow-up tomorrow is fine.
Okay.
What percentage of our license and franchise revenue is medical marijuana? Well, I guess we can drop "medical" now, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what percentage of the city's license and franchise revenue?
Nothing.
It's medical marijuana.
It, it, it took a little while to ramp up. It did a little better this year, if I remember correctly, but it's not a whole lot. I'm gonna say, what, maybe a million?
I think it was only a million.
Not even a million?
I couldn't confirm that.
What is our total on license and revenue, license and franchises? Vanetta, that line item.
It is...
Eighty million?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
What were the projections that it would to be this year?
Medical, I'm sorry. Medical marijuana in FY16 contributed one point six million to our revenue.
And was projected to be coming in at that?
I believe we were projecting that at, about that range, because we had some pretty good numbers from Karen's folks on that, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that.
I think we were anticipating, when we authorized the program, I think we were anticipating more than that. But as far as budget projections, you may remember, I believe it was Councilman Anthony had requested an, a report after the first year on how things had actually performed. We provided that. I'm happy to give it back to you. But that gave us a much better baseline of expectation about what actually was going to come in. And there's also been some relief to the fees since the initial program definition was put together. So all of those things together, we're probably not at what the early estimates would've been from Karen and the team, but Vanetta's been able to work it so that we're not underperforming in that budget projection based on our past performance. We're pretty close in the projections.
Thank you.
And, and we did receive revenue in FY15 as well, so that's when it actually started, and that was the year we didn't get what we expected. Yes. So with that, we are gonna be projecting a modest growth of one percent, because we know that as we've stabilized all of these downflows, we should be experiencing some uptick in those revenues. And then the other category, the negative eight point five percent that we budgeted, that's more somewhat misleading, because remember, we moved municipal sports out of the general fund and put it into a special revenue fund so that we could have better, have more transparency in that particular line of business. In addition, Clark County inmates left our, we no longer were servicing the Clark County inmates, so that reduced our revenue in that area, and that's part of that eight point five percent. We also saw the lowering of the Muni Court fees, so that's in there as well. But one thing that did happen in FY16, as you can see, we performed better in actual, we had our EMS transports performed better, and we also were able to provide, we also received the SAFER grant, so those monies are going into that other category, so it's making that we did not perform as badly in the other category. Going into the FY18 budget, or FY17 budget, we left that relatively flat as we started the year, and right now, we're still trending downward in our court fines. I did talk to Dana Havlek of Muni Court. He, the first quarter is down, but he sees that there's more tickets being issued in the first month, so he's hoping that that revenue will change, and we'll be coming back and reevaluating that as we watch that trend. With that, this chart just shows the other category, the license and franchise being the dark, and the dark bar, and the fees being the light bar. And as you can see, this is a relatively stable source of revenue for us. The uptick that we saw in 15 was definitely due to our revenue enhancements, but again, this, this provides us the, the stabilization or some stable revenues in this area. This is to recap what happened in FY16. We were slightly under our revenue that we had budgeted, but we did make up for it on the underruns that we experienced on the expenditure side. The growth overall, we had budgeted was six point four percent, and we came in at four point seven percent in overall growth. The labor budget was trend, trended downwards by about five million dollars. This is totally related to vacancies and trying to fill the new positions as well as vacancies as people are retiring. The non-labor budget, we were able to save about six million dollars in that area. Part of that was due to the fact that as we entered our FY17 budget and saw that our property tax revenue was lower, we asked the departments to see what they could defer, and they responded very well, as well as we had some savings. We had some contingency money that we did not need to spend because of that, and we also had some savings in our utilities based on our, our sustainability efforts that we've been going through. And again, we were able to save about three million dollars in debt service with all the refinancings that we did. At the end of the year, we were able to augment our budget for nine point one million dollars, and we were able to take that and use it for our one-time expenditures, as well as to put money into our capital program for FY16. That'll help us in FY17. This just recaps our general fund revenues. We received five hundred and twenty-one million in revenue. It shows that consolidated tax is that fifty-two percent, and property tax eighteen percent. So seventy percent of our revenues is basically driven by NRS, and we have very little influence over other than through legislative action. And then the other remaining thirty percent is that license and franchise and other. On the expenditure side, we do, we did this by our functions of activity. The functions, you can see, public safety is our number one function at sixty-eight percent, and followed by general government, and that's at our ten percent. The overview of FY17, we budgeted the, the C-Tax, our budget in C-Tax was three point two, and I, that was, that dash isn't a negative there, by the way. We budgeted three point two, and we're gonna be coming in at three point five, so we have a slight uptick there. And again, we have a little bit of increase in our property taxes, so overall, we are trending pretty much on budget, a little bit over, not much, about seven hundred thousand. On the expenditure side, we are trending pretty much online with what it was, what we have, so we have not reduced that for our current estimates. But again, we'll be reviewing that as we go through the year. And then, we had budgeted, our revenues equal to our expenditure, so right now, we have a slight surplus. This is our schedule that shows the numbers that we've just discussed in our wonderful accounting format. So the FY16 represents our audited financials that we, we are unaudited, but we plan to be presenting the audited ones soon to you. FY17 is our estimated expenditure or estimated for 17 revised based on our discussions. And FY18, with the forecast information that we received from our financial oversight committee and our trending, we've put those projections in for the revenue side, and on the expenditure side, we trended those based on our contractual obligations and just a little bit of increase. And right now, we feel that we're gonna, we look at, we're looking at a six point two shortfall. A lot of that is being driven by, you can see, the Metropolitan Police Department went up. We know that they used ten million of their fund balance last year in order to help us, help through the, the budget. We, they have not done any, they were not able to give me an estimate, a revised estimate, so we're still anticipating that they will not have fund balance going forward to contribute to their expenditures.
A question, if I might, Ms. Appleyard, and Councilman Barlow would too. Where is that sales tax, LVMPD's gonna be getting, would does that affect our contribution at all, or is that on top of the county's mandate us that we pay the extra?
They're, they'll be putting that into a special revenue fund. You're talking, the metro, so that, it'll be going into a special revenue fund, and they'll be using it like the Moore cops. They will probably be able to hire more officers in that fund because of that. We haven't had any revised estimates from them at this point, so we expect that number. We'll be working with the county, and we expect that number to change. So I, I really anticipate this number being better as we go through the budget process.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Vanetta, I'm looking at the transfers in from other fund revenues, and for FY17, what is it, two point seven million? And for FY18, one point seven?
Yes.
Where's, where are we transferring that in from?
Okay, the one point seven million is coming from the RDA. Okay, the 1.7 million is coming from the RDA in the budget process. We agreed that the RDA would help fund the downtown Rangers, as well as all of the infrastruc, not the infrastructure, but the maintenance of the downtown area. So 1.7 is helping to fund those costs, and the other million was one-time transfers that we took from our internal service funds. We saw some excess funding there, and we brought that in. In FY18, we know that that continuing obligation is there from the RDA, but we have, we don't know if we'll have any surplus to bring in from other funds.
Okay, and then the transfer out the one time, the 9.1 million?
The 9.1 million, that was when we did our budget augmentation in June, and we transferred 5.4 million to operating, operating issues, and 3.7 to the capital projects.
And then FY18, it looks like we have another?
FY18, that's, that's actually our shortfall.
Oh, the shortfall.
It's the shortfall that we're projecting right now, or forecasting, I should say. Because, again, we will be bringing these numbers back to you.
For adjustments and augmentation.
As we work through the year.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilman Mayor Protem, question, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Vanetta. What's, what do we have in reserve?
Reserve, our reserves, we're showing the, our fund balance reserve is at 19%, but we also have 13 million in the fiscal stabilization fund.
See, 19% of our entire budget.
Of the general fund budget, yes.
And then, and then what was the other number?
And the additional 13 million is in the fiscal stabilization fund as a reserve.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is the chart that just shows the expenditures are in the bars, and the revenue is in the green line across the top, and it shows that we definitely strive to balance our budget and use our resources wisely. This is our budget cycle. We'll be having our budget kickoff with departments in December, and we'll be reviewing the budgets with them, and we'll be bringing these numbers back to you before we file tentative, which is April 15th. Again, we'll be having more conversations with you and with staff, and we'll be bringing a final budget back to you on May 16th, and then we'll file that budget with taxation on June 1st. So we will have several opportunities to revisit these numbers and bring forth a better budget for FY18.
Fine.
With that.
Any other comments, questions? I would entertain a motion to accept.
Your Honor, I would be honored to, before I make that motion, I want to say this. Mr. Vincent, your entire financial team has been fabulous over the years to work with. Always, numbers always coming in. Ms. Fretwell under your leadership as well, going through the worst recession in history. You guys just continue to keep doing the right thing for the residents of this city. So I make a motion to accept this report.
Thank you very much. It is, I think we all echo that, and knowing that you had us tighten the belt starting in '08, so it's really shown. So please, there's a motion to approve. Please vote, and please post.
He's AWOL.
He is AWOL. Okay. And that motion carries. Thank you, Vanetta. And we'll now move on to boards and commissions. Agenda item 48. For possible action, City of Las Vegas Citizens Advisory Committee, the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, Lois Mack, category D. Ashel Jones, category E, and Beverly Mathis, category F. Term expires 11/2 of 2016. Ms. Mack, Ms. Jones, Ms. Mathis are eligible and all wish to be reappointed. Councilman Barlow, I understand you have a recommendation?
Yes, to reappoint all three back to the board. That'll be my motion at this time.
Okay, there's a motion to reappoint all three. Would you please be kind enough to vote? And post, please. That motion carries, and we are now on to agenda item 49. For possible action, Building and Safety Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. Christopher Knight, term expiration 12/17/2016. City manager recommends the reappointment of Mr. Knight to fill the seat for a public officer, the Department of Building and Safely, who directly oversees the operation of the enterprise fund. May I have a motion, Mayor Protem?
You bet. I would move to reappoint Mr. Knight.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to reappoint Chris Knight, who does such a great job for us. And please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Well, we may fire him then. We'll appoint him to the committee, but we'll fire him from the job. Okay, moving right along. Congratulations, Chris Knight. Agenda item 50, for possible action, Audit Oversight Committee. Annette Caro, term expiration 8/6/2016. Ms. Caro was originally appointed August 2014, no longer wishes to serve. The procedure for this committee requires appointment, reappointment by the mayor with ratification by city council. You should have the name. Could you spell the last name? Melanie Rollo is my recommendation to fill that position, and is my recommendation and my motion, so please vote on that. And please post. And welcome, and thank you, Annette Caro, for your service in the past. Okay, agenda item 51, recommending committee. Bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, bill number 2016-57. Councilman Barlow, would you care to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2016-57. First Amendment, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, you prescribe the land to be annexed to make it so that it has its own laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval, first amendment.
Mayor, Mayor?
Councilman Anthony?
With your permission, Councilman Barlow, we have a little bit more negotiation with the county. So if it's okay, can you make a motion to obey this until the next meeting?
Sure. What would that next meeting be, the 20?
First.
First?
And the same thing with the next one, too.
Okay, so let's take it one at a time. There's a motion to obey this to December 21st?
To December 21st.
Thank you very much on this item. He did.
He did.
He read the first one.
He read it.
We're all read and everything's cool. No, we haven't read that. We're not voting yet. Okay, so we're on to now agenda item 52, bill number 522016-5A. Would you care to have it read?
Yes, Mayor.
The first one, 51 passed.
Bill number 2016-58, First Amendment, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, prescribe the land to be annexed to make it so that it has its own laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Mayor, I request that this item 52 be obeyed to December 21st.
Okay, there's a motion to obey this item to the 21st of December 2016. Please vote, and please post. Councilman Ross? Thank you. That motion carries. Agenda item 53. Recommending Committee. Bills eligible for adoption later meeting. Items 53 and 54, bills 2016-64 and 2016-70 will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. New bills. Items 55 and 56, bills number 2016-71. 2016-72 will be heard at recommending committee Monday, March, excuse me, December 19th, 2016. City Attorney, please read the new bills.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill number 2016-71, in order to extend the unified development code to reinstate the designed commercial CD zoning district and establish standards, therefore relocate the adjust standards pertaining to the PO and O districts, and provide for other related matters. And finally, bill number 2016-72, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, prescribe the land to be annexed to make it so that it has its own laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. These new bills are assigned to the recommending committee, member Councilmen Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin. If any so designated or unable to attend the clerk's office, will coordinate finding substitute as necessary at my direction. Thank you very much. Agenda items 57 through 59 are on the consent agenda, considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 57 through 59?
I move to approve agenda items 57 through 59.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Councilman Coffin? That's okay. Motion carries. Okay, agenda item 60, Z01-65372, in a request for rezoning from R1, single-family residential, C1 Limited Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial, number 61, VAR65373, in a request for variance to allow a five-foot front yard setback, and to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where 10 feet's required for proposed 1,280 square foot building, and to allow seven-foot front yard setback and a zero-foot side yard setback where 10 feet's required for an existing non-conforming building. Agenda item 62, VAR65374, in a request for variance to allow zero additional parking spaces on a parking, on a parking impaired development where eight additional spaces are required. Agenda item 63, SUP65375, in a request for special use permit for a proposed boat and trailer dealership, new and used, with a waiver to allow a minimum site area of 23,087 square feet, where 25,000 square feet are required at 5250 West Charleston Boulevard. And agenda item 64, SDR65376, in a request for site development plan review for the proposed conversion of four shipping containers totaling 1,280 square feet to a building. The applicant is Nevada Safes, and the owner is MCC Investment Company, LTD, on 0.53 acres at 5250 West Charleston Boulevard, R1, single-family residential, C1 Limited Commercial, zones proposed, C1 Limited Commercial. Staff recommends approval of item 16, Don Eyes, item 61 through 64. Planning Commission recommends approval on all items. These are in Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian in public hearings, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Mayor, Council, George Garcia, 10:55, Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite 210. Pleasure to be before you. And, do you want me to go ahead?
Yep.
Well, first off, I think it appears that probably in the very near future, according to your staff, I'll be here with a little Alexa, and I'll just put it down and let it answer questions for you, so.
You can stay home and watch on TV?
I can, exactly.
That would be the "my George Garcia" skill.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and appreciate certainly working with Councilwoman Tarkanian and her office. This has, you know, been an effort to basically try and take an area that's been difficult for a business to find its way here is great, because it helps a struggling neighborhood. It's, we have a number of homeless in the area, vagrants sleeping up on the roofs, moving into the buildings. So this is a step to basically help a business establish itself, and help reinvest, and hopefully attract some good businesses into the area. And so with the Councilwoman's assistance, we think we have an item ready for your approval, and we agree with the conditions that are proposed, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perico, how about telling us about the denials?
Thank you, Your Honor, but I'd like to start with the approval, and then maybe I'll turn it over to Mr. Lowenstein.
That's our pattern. Go for it. I'm so glad he's well nourished.
Actually.
Go.
We do support the rezoning, as it would bring the entire property under a commercial zoning district and eliminate a dual-designated development. However, on the denials, we see the over-intensification of the site resulting in the variances, and therefore that is why we're recommending the denial of the remaining items.
Great, and the conditions you put on it, Mr. Garcia already said that they have approved those conditions, correct?
The conditions that Mr. Garcia is referring to were placed on this item between Planning Commission and City Council, so they're already in here. They're in the backup, and they're part of this application, so if you do choose to approve the item, those conditions are in place already.
Thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on any of these items? Hearing, and seeing no one, I will close them and turn this over to Councilwoman. And let's take them one at a time.
All right, item number 60, and before I get into that, I just want to say I really appreciate the help from the representative and the owner of the applicant, and the applicant himself. We met more than once, several times, and we've communicated at my office and over the phone. Our staff has worked with them, and it's been complicated, but I think it will make this area of the city look better. It looks complicated, but that's what we think. So for item number 60, I agree it's better to have the one zoning of C1 than having a broken-up zoning, so I move for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 60. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Agenda item 61, please.
And then, beginning with item number 61, I would like you to read into the record the conditions, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first condition I think the Councilwoman is interested in would begin with the special use permit, item 63.
Yes, I was just going to read them all because they pertain, you just want to do it with the individual one? We can do that then. Okay, then. Item number 61, where we're losing some of the setbacks. There are, there is landscaping coming in that's going to allow that to look better than it looks now, and then it would look if there were a little larger setback. And so I say that move to approve with all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on 61. Please vote.
And I also want to say on that, too, the landscaping they've already put in to show us what they plan to do, but I also want to talk about the maintaining, which I have talked with their attorney, and not just planting it, but maintaining it.
Okay, please post, and Councilwoman, share a vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Agenda item 62.
Move to approve with all conditions.
Thank you. A motion to approve on 62. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. On 63, please.
And, Your Honor, this is, this is one I think Council, this has one of the added conditions. Condition one, an administrative required review shall be conducted in one year from the date of issuance of business license.
That's agreed to by you, Mr. First.
That's acceptable, Mayor.
Thank you.
Move to approve with all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on 63. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. And on 64, please.
There were additional conditions here, too, I believe, that the Councilman wanted read?
Yes.
So condition number one, the subject site shall be limited to four shipping containers. Condition two, nine 15-gallon, nine 15-gallon Italian cypress trees shall be installed adjacent to Alpine Way within the existing landscape buffer for the express purpose of providing visual screening of the storage containers. The Italian cypress trees are to be maintained at a height not to exceed 12 feet, so as to not be in conflict with the adjacent existing power lines, meanwhile continuing to provide visual screening of the storage containers.
And he, they did agree to that. Do you mean if I ask?
Okay.
And again, Mayor, yes, we did agree to those conditions.
Move to approve with all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 64 with all conditions. Please vote, and please post. And Councilman, Mayor Protem, there you go, running for it, and that's approved. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council.
You've been here a long day, Mr. Garcia. I saw you sitting way over there, and I thought, I wonder. And here it is, yep, 10 after 2, and you didn't nap. I watched. You weren't texting. You're just sitting there.
Listening.
Wonderful.
Mayor and Council, thank you, and if I don't see you again, have a wonderful Christmas. Happy holidays, and we'll see you in 2017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to set the date for any appeals filed or required in public hearings, instruct the city clerk to set public hearing dates, and appeals from city planning commission meetings in dangerous building or nuisance letter abatements.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have our second public participation. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium and give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited.
Hi, Ms. Judge Cabana, their mother, thank you. I, these men are.
Your name.
My name is Ms. Chantel Rollison, sorry. These people are sadly trying to infringe on my idea, and they know. I'm asking you to address this to our family members out here in Las Vegas, Nevada. There's terribly too many sites being developed, you know? I'm just trying to put a park up in Naked City. This is a $3 billion project that they started in Henderson years ago. On top of, you know, trying to bring the Raiders here, we don't want them here at all. Also, 1.9 billion has been taken out of the fund, my trust fund for my royalties, basically amongst other projects, you know? And I'm kind of like disgusted by it. I've been given to the family. I love them dearly, all my life, for 30 years. I can't do it anymore. The lady that hit me, she looked like the blonde that. The lady that hit me, she looked like the blonde that was here when we first started, you know, earlier, and she kept going. And I have a police report on it and no one has addressed it yet. And I'm asking all the attorneys down here to stop befriending each other when someone does wrong that needs to be prosecuted because these family members know, along with my Aunt Arnette, she knows I want my own life. I need my own life. I don't know who died. They have developed so many shows out here in the entertainment world that they are living in. I'm not living in this entertainment world. It's really serious and I'm not trying to at all allow these family members to keep controlling me. This man right here, he knows about this nook, basically. He do. It's like a tablet book, you know? And he's happy. And fortunately, I have met all the different people from all over the world, these different sheiks and these different, you know, kings and queens. They don't think it's fair. This man wants to kill me, this brother and this sister who's been jealous like forever and I still don't even know how many kids there really are in the family because my dad was the role in stone forever. And it's like, we're trying to figure out the blood, DNA to the hair follicle cell to see how many are really related. It's like, not three hundred at all. There's three hundred family members down here alone, I believe, and are more. And I'm trying to give to them, but I'm fed up with them right now. They've been taking and taking and taking and squandering away through real estate fraud, all kind of fraud, like he said, identity theft, basically. So helping with all that stuff, going through casinos, buying into all the casinos ever since Michael Khan, Artist Campani, Billy Joe been here, it's just been nonstop crimes, basically, going on here. And no one is addressing it because he goes to these polite...
Where, excuse me if I may, where do you live?
I live in Naked City.
Oh, you do.
I live with...
What I'm going to suggest is...
Mario Brother.
Okay.
And they won't pay off their home.
Councilman Coffin?
They won't do anything for these people.
Councilman Coffin?
And we've been working in the show forever.
Excuse me, Mr. Ortiz might be able to help you. We are in a position because it's your point, your opportunity to address council, but council's not able to respond to you.
I know because, okay.
So we might ask Mr. Ortiz just to see if he can give you some guidance.
Okay. But what I'm doing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, Your Honor, I'd like to give Felipe Ortiz the assignment of visiting and taking the information down and all of the things that are important to our visitor.
Thank you.
And right in the back of the room is...
There's the gentleman.
Tell him to take Joe for backup.
Okay, is that your request? And also Mr. Samuel for backup.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell, according to the Councilman here.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Anthony Casabianca, hi, Mayor Protem, Council. Happy holidays again. Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Say it's him to...
Thank you.
Oscar. Now, again, working with Felipe again, I hope you got my Facebook games over the week, over the holiday. Maybe I Facebooked you. Anyway, I did win in court, thanks for that, but he's starting again and like this young lady said, she's homeless now. It's out of hand. It's just bad. I mean, now he's coming at us again. We just came up with, we won the case, but he wanted twelve-hundred. He stopped the rent on his own problem. That was his thing. We didn't do it. We offered, right? He tried to make us so much for no reason, you know? And it's just out of hand and it's, you know, I hope, working with Councilman Coffin and Felipe, that maybe me and this young lady can get something resolved to stop these people from doing this to us.
They're just going out.
Yeah, because now I saw your fiscal thing with the raising of the taxes. What does that do? That raises rents. Landlord, I mean owner has to, rental owner has more taxes, that means they have to raise the rent. So people like us can't afford it. Where are you going to go? We're forced to go to the streets or to another state. And why, I would love, I like it here. I love it here. Been here almost seven years. I like it. I want to live here downtown, live close to Councilman Coffin, area, Warden, as a matter of a couple of blocks from him, as you say. And it should, hopefully, everything gets done.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you.
You like it?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again.
Happy holidays to you.
Have a great holiday.
And Ms. Ortiz stepped out. Okay, anyone else? I will close citizen participation. We'll move on to agenda item sixty-eight. Council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the council unless that object is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Starting from my less, Councilman Coffin. Any, anything?
Nothing to report right now, Your Honor. We're just keeping an eye on things over there.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the Nevada Department of Transportation will be hosting a public meeting. The Department of Transportation will host a public meeting from four PM to seven PM at the historic Fifth Street School to discuss upcoming plans for Project Neon. So for those in our community who would like a full update on what's happening with Project Neon and all of the highway systems and closures, please come out to the Fifth Street School tonight from four to seven PM. In addition to that, the Nevada Ballet Theater, The Nutcracker, begins December eleventh through the twenty-fourth of December. The Nutcracker is a festive, joyous Las Vegas tradition that keeps on growing. In 2016, the Nevada Ballet Theater Company artists will lead you through the wonder and sparkle of the season with eleven performances over three weekends. So please visit the Smith Performing Arts Center. Their website is thesmithcenter.com for ticket information. The Historic West Side School, located at Washington Avenue and D Street, has professional office space available. So if you're looking for office space or you have a cafe concept, we have an opportunity for you at the Historic West Side School. Please contact Julie Quisenberry at seven-zero-two-two-two-nine-six-five-five-one for more information. On January twentieth, Durfeld Senior Center, Mother Hubbard's Cupboard. This is an early notification that the Mother Hubbard's Cupboard pantry will give bags and food to the community through January twentieth, 2017, from ten AM to twelve noon. For more information, please contact them at two-two-nine-two-two-three-eight. And in January, January twelfth, Coffee with the Councilman will take place at Starbucks at twenty-seventeen, I'm sorry, nineteen-twenty-five North Martin Luther King Boulevard. So please come out January twelfth from nine AM to ten AM. And of course, you may follow me on all of my social media platforms. And that will be all for Ward Five. And I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. And before Councilwoman, I just want to alert you on the left side, we will be adjourning this meeting, but then we will be going into closed session.
Today?
Today. We'll do it up on the seventh floor in the Mayor's Conference Room. Directly, no food, stop in the back, grab your food, bring it with you, but directly, as quickly as we can get there, please.
Okay.
Okay, Councilwoman.
I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Barlow said about the meeting from NDOT, which will update residents and businesses tonight on Project Neon, which is the one-fifteen construction between the Spaghetti Bowl and Sahara. It takes place at the Historic Fifth Street School, four-oh-one South Fourth Street, and will occur between four and seven PM. And at five-thirty PM will be a presentation. So that, if you can only go for a little while, that would be the time to go. Secondly, the RTC's annual bike ride is taking place this Saturday, December tenth, beginning at eight AM. The ride starts at the West Cliff Transit Station and concludes at Nevada Energy's headquarters on Sahara. Please come. Please bring a new unwrapped toy for the toy drive. And you can also see our Mr. Bob Beers there, I think. He's there every year, does a great job. He looks robust and healthy and vigorous when he...
Especially on the downhill portions.
Well, that's what you tell me, the downhill portions help it. And residents must register at rtcnsvada.com to participate. There will be gifts collected for youngsters. Desert Gym Cats are a really highly respected gymnastic program. On Monday, December twelfth, at noon, we'll have a groundbreaking for their new home on the corner of Cimarron and Villa Olivera. It's an expansion from what they had previously and it's really a great expansion. Dexter Park renovation groundbreaking will occur on Wednesday, December fourteenth. I'll be there at Dexter Park and it will be taking place at three PM. And of course, that's at eight-hundred Upland Avenue. It's undergoing a substantial renovation, which will require closure of the park for about one year. So, but I'll tell you, when we get done, we're going to even have the best doggy park and the best human park possible on that much acreage. When complete, Dexter Park will have added lighting, lighting in the walking areas, new lighted basketball courts, a splash pad, four exercise areas, an upgraded dog park and added trees and landscaping. And I just want to give kudos to the city workers who have worked so hard to get that going and are doing such a good job on it. And in other news, Ward One is partnering again with the Clark County School District Police for Shop with a Cop. We will be meeting with Santa at the Starbucks on the corner of Decatur and Charleston before heading to Walmart. The event is taking place on Saturday, December seventeenth, at nine AM. We and others partner with the police from the school district so that each child is given a card of a hundred dollars and they're taking all the children from one elementary school that's in need and they're taking the, all of them there to be able to buy something for Christmas with the hundred-dollar card. So I think that's wonderful. We're also participating again this year in the annual Keen Holiday Party at Clark High School. The event with the Spring Valley Area Command and community partners is taking place on December fifteenth at six PM. And finally, I will be joining seniors at Sartina Plaza, James Down Tower, Stella Fleming and Clark Towers for our Halloween events where we, the city and others who donate, will be providing Christmas dinners for seniors who do not have anyone to have Christmas dinner with. That's it.
Mayor Protem, you're going to go next. We're just going right on down.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate that opportunity. As always in Ward Six, there's something entertaining and interesting going on, without a doubt. We just had our tenth annual Cowboy Christmas at Floyd Lamb Park at Tulley Springs and once again, another major success. My appreciation to Kristy Garnis and her team, my entire staff, and of course, my lovely bride for hanging out with me as long as she did. She's operating that tractor right there, so that's always fun. That's always fun. Something fun coming up is the Family Fun Activity Night at the Centennial Hills Community Center. It is December sixteenth, five PM. It is a family cookie exchange and movie night. And bring a jacket because we'll be watching Polar Express and I do anticipate an appearance from jolly old Saint Nicholas, Santa Claus. So that's going to be fun as well. Before I get on to the more serious things in this community, I have some sad news and some good news. I will be, have we got that graphic? I want to say thank you very much to Mrs. Jana Bruner in my office.
Yes.
Jana is leaving the Ward Six Centennial Hills office and has accepted a position as a manager in Parks and Recreation. A little background about Jana, she's been involved with Parks and Recreation for twelve years of experience and she's going to be a major asset, is a major loss for Ward Six, but a major gain for the entire city of Las Vegas. We're going to miss her tremendously. And when my wife and I interviewed her to hire her, she was like a fish out of a fishbowl because I threw her into a whole different world than she had, has trained her professional career for and has done a fabulous job. So Ms. Bruner, thank you very much for your service to the citizens of the city and Ward Six. Thank you. And that's why I need to just sit in the audience. And now for the more serious note, our continued partnership and relationship with Nevada Child Seekers. We do have a missing young lady. Her name is Victoria Castro. She's sixteen years old, five foot five. She is Hispanic. She's last contact was November eleventh, two thousand sixteen. She has two small freckles on her chin. She was last seen in the area of South Decatur and West Oke and probably last seen wearing long-sleeved shirt, black pants and black shoes. She may be carrying a backpack with personal items. If you have any information about the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact Las Vegas Mountain Park Police Department at seven-zero-two-eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one. Of course, Nevada Child Seekers at seven-zero-two-four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine. And as always, if you need to reach me, I'm easy to find. You can always go to www.lasvegasnevada.gov/wardsix. You can email me, councilman-hyphen-s Ross, lasvegasnevada.gov. The old-fashioned way, pick up that phone. Those of you that still have a rotary dial phone, two-seven-zero-two-two-two-nine-six-one-five-four, and I'm all over social media. So with that, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jana.
Thank you. First, we'll start off with the household and hazardous waste collection. We'll be having that, there you go. It's going to be this Saturday. It's going to be in Sun City Summerlin at the Mountain Shadows Community Center. We'll have people lined up in their cars that want to get rid of household hazardous stuff like batteries, light bulbs, oil, paint, things like that.
Spouses?
No, Caroline.
Are you showing up, Mayor?
No, kidding. You know me.
So, yeah, you're invited to come anytime, absolutely. So, well, you can drive up. You don't have to get out of your car. We'll have lots of folks there to safely take all that stuff out of your car and put it in a proper disposal. So again, that's in Sun City. Summerlin, the Mountain Shadows Community Center starts at ten AM. We finish at noon. And then my final item is our holiday event, which is myself and Ward Four partnering up with the YMCA. We're going to have, start off at six PM with the cookie decorating and other fun activities and then we will slide into watching the Polar Express. So it will be at the Drango Hills Y at Drango and Gowan, starts at six PM. Movie will start around seven o'clock. And come on out. Everything's free. Bring your kids and something to munch on and we'll have some other stuff there for you. So thank you.
Great. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are all done with our Coffee with Councilmen and Beers with Beers events for 2016. Nothing scheduled for December. My personal calendar for 2017 is still in Santa's hands, but if you have a hold of yours, you could note that we do have Coffee with the Councilman at Charlie's Lakeside, January sixth, seven-thirty to nine in the morning, and Beers with Beers at Three Angry Wives Boca Park on January nineteenth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And I hope to see everyone there. Quick reminder that the business kiosk at the Sahara West Library is going to be at that location through the end of the year. Go check it out. We're hopefully going to roll out more of these next year because they do seem to be working. You can see all the things there on the image that you can do and save yourself a trip to either the Development Services Center or down here to City Hall itself.
It doesn't say get in touch with Councilman Beers on it, though.
This is for all wards to enjoy.
Oh. Does it say?
No Alexa yet. It is not voice activated. Not yet. Not yet. This day, music history, I thought it might be kind of interesting, given that several of us have mentioned today, starting with the invocation this morning, that it was seventy-five years ago today that the Pearl Harbor attack took place. I thought it would be interesting to look back and see what the number one song in America was on that day. And Mr. Jerwic immediately said, I'm not sure, but I'll bet it's a big band song. And he's right. Chattanooga Chuchu actually sat on top of the charts for most of the year.
Glenn Miller's Chattanooga Chuchu?
Yep. Happened to be straddling the charts at the time of that Pearl Harbor attack. There is a rare photo of an even rarer original label from that piece.
I have records that look like that.
Of vinyl.
Was that what that is?
That's a record. That's a record.
That's what a record looks like, kids, yeah.
Wow, for you younger folk, and look where this one is manufactured.
And, Your Honor?
Camden.
Not on exactly the same note, but it bears, again, this is a Brad thing who brought it to my attention, bears some mention. Happy 100th birthday to Kirk Douglas next Friday.
Wow, geez.
He's turning 100 years old Friday in two days.
I'm amazed.